Uh, let's see. Good evening, everyone. It is Thursday, April...
Eighteenth.
Thank you, eighteenth. I call the Select Board meeting to order at six twenty-two. Please stand and join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And announcements. The Worcester Regional Transit Authority is seeking a private community representative to sit on the WRTA Advisory Board. Volunteer is a volunteer, one-year position with voting rights. Those... I'm sorry?
No, he wasn't.
Oh, sorry. All right. Those interested to contact the Select Board Office at selectman@brookfieldma.us to apply. The deadline to apply is June first. Uh, tonight's meeting is being recorded by the town. Is anyone else here recording? Mr. Kelleher with the fancy gear. All right. And let's see. Brad, could you run the warrants for us?
Yes. Uh, FY twenty-four twenty-one payroll, one hundred ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. FY twenty-four twenty-one accounts payable, four hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-one cents. And this week, there is no withholding warrant.
Okay. All right, moving on to the agenda. Uh, Agenda item number one is the Host Community Agreement with Sun Fusions for the manufacturing operations.
Me and KP didn't properly connect.
Okay.
Um, I have a draft that got delivered. I think it's sitting in my email right now. I think it got delivered this afternoon.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I have not had a chance to review it or have any discussion with Nicole. So she's supposed to... Or it may be in my email. It might not be coming until tomorrow morning. Uh, it needs to get reviewed, discussed, and then sent back over to Mr. Fromm for his council to review.
Okay.
So we've made some progress, but we're not there yet.
So we should, um...
Put it on the agenda for next week.
Is this likely to be May second, our next regular scheduled meeting, two weeks from today?
I...
We could do it.
I'll put it on the draft agenda. You can, if it's not ready, you can let me know.
Well, it'll be ready before the second of May.
Okay.
Do you want to do it next week?
Yeah, I'd prefer to do it next week if we can.
We already have meetings Thursday and Friday next week.
Okay.
And we also have the town, we have the town administrator interviews tomorrow night.
Okay. So I know we have meetings next week. It might be something we can handle in open session before one of the meetings next week. So if we have it by Monday or Tuesday, let's consider putting it on the agenda, but put it on the second for sure.
Okay.
And then if we can pull it in, we will.
Okay, that's fine. Just let me know. The, uh, I would say the other matter, we want to start on time, so we're gonna have to get here before six fifteen. We're gonna have to be able to finish the open session before six fifteen.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, we'll figure that out.
Yeah.
We can talk about that offline. That's agenda setting.
Yep.
Okay. All right, no action. Do, uh, do we need a motion to pass that over, or was that, was our discussion sufficient?
Uh, I think that's, discussion was sufficient.
All right. All right, so, um, number, Agenda item number two, request use the banquet hall for public meeting, um, Sun Fusions. And so that was a request from Mr. Fromm, and I believe the, uh... Uh, Mr. Fromm, is that, is that meeting state required by state law?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's the detail I wanted to...
Yeah, one, it's a public meeting, and two, I don't think we've denied any group for any reason thus far.
Well, I, my one, my one concern was that because it was a private company, that I wasn't sure. But given that it's required by law, I think that's sufficient justification to, uh...
Yeah.
That it's, it, there is a rationale for use of the public space for that meeting.
Yeah, that's a good point. Okay.
Yeah. All right, and let's see, and that's on Wednesday evening, so, uh, let's see, I would say we should, um, ask... Mike is, the clerk's office is open until eight o'clock on Wednesday, so the building is open to the public during this time.
Okay.
I think, so I think just with the stipulation that...
I think the other question is, is do we have any concern that it will exceed the room capacity?
Okay, I, I was going to get there. I would say that, um... Who is capable, who, what, do we know what the rated capability of this room is?
What do you think?
No idea.
One hundred and seventy-five.
This room?
This room. It's posted on the board outside.
I would, we might want to get that redone, because that's before that went in. But you know what? One seventy, even, even...
It was wired out to be by the fire chief today.
Okay, so...
Nobody noticed.
A hundred, so one hundred seventy-five, I mean, I, I think we'll, given that it's...
They haven't changed it.
Yeah.
You think we'll have one hundred seventy-five, I think so.
So...
I doubt that. I would say that, I think, if you, if you get forty, I'd probably be surprised.
I don't know, coffee, pastry.
You know, maybe we could do like a lottery about how many people show up.
Brownies?
I could tell you mean...
I've got some gummy candy. All right, so...
Probably not that kind of guy.
I, I know. All right, so I, I think with the stipulation that there's a hard stop at eight o'clock when the town hall closes and the general expectation that the, uh, that the room is in good shape when it's done, I think that this, there's no reason to say no.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for the banquet hall use for the public meeting for Sun Fusions.
Second.
All right, um, any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all in favor of the, of approving the use of Beth's motion regarding this room in the Sun Fusions meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that is approved. Karen?
Yeah.
Um, next time, next time we have a request for use like this, please remind me to put the date of, of the meeting in just for, um, in the agenda, for clarity, and also just for reference. Because I'm looking, going, I'm looking at the agenda. I don't know when we approved it for, and I had to go look it up on the side, so, thank you. Uh, let's see, Agenda, I, so that's number two. Number three, Eighteen Common Street Accessibility Requirements Discussion. Uh, Beth, this is your lead.
Oh, okay, yep. So, first of all, um... Let me just see, is the email included? Yes. That's great. So, um, I received an email from the library director, okay? And I believe, did you forward it to the other members for private purposes? So you all have seen it, right? Um, so, and you know what? I, I didn't come here ready to cite all of the various and sundry mass general laws associated with this, but however, okay? We have a situation where private entities, who have no obligation under open meeting law, who are using that building for their own purposes, with the permission of the library, groups that support our community, like the Community Club, okay, like the Scouts, okay, um, are getting harassed, and it is harassed, okay, by Mr. Holcraft, when they, um, are using that building. And they are under no restrictions. They're private groups. Their meetings aren't open to the public. There is, while it's, you know, it's nice if an area is ADA compliant, it's not governed by state or federal law. They are private entities. They have no obligation to meet accessibility standards. And they don't need to get harangued by somebody who's got no business being at their private meeting. Okay? And then from the Attorney General's site regarding meetings, right? It's, it's kind of their opinion that we've overstepped our authority, right, uh, to give a dictate of no meetings at Eighteen Common Street. Okay, or no open meetings at Eighteen Common Street. So...
Really?
Um, yeah, so...
Even for, even for committees that are creatures of the Select Board effectively, that are appointed by us?
Yeah, so, so, all, so, and this is the, this is the open meeting law information. So, you know...
Well, I think what this is saying, and what I've understood before, is if somebody requests accommodations, then the accommodations have to be made.
Absolutely. But the person who requests the accommodation has to have standing, okay?
Yeah.
So somebody who is not registered or certified as disabled, has no legal standing to demand additional support for use of the building in order to attend a meeting, right? I'm a disabled vet, but I can do stairs, okay? I don't personally have standing to demand assistance to get to an open meeting. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Now, if my condition deteriorated to the point where I couldn't do four stairs, then I would have standing, particularly if it's posted in the open meeting law, in the open meeting indicating, you know, who to contact for access, so long as there's appropriate notice and it's up with an appropriate amount of time, there's no reason why even our committees can't meet there, okay? And yes, we appoint the committees, but we appoint them, they elect their own officers, and if their officers determine to hold a meeting in that space, can we forbid the use of that building? Yes. Do we actually have any means to enforce that? No. So this, that's the concept of weak central government, okay? We, we don't actually, we can advise, but the chairs are, and then we can unappoint people if we don't appoint.
That, it sounds like you're, you're saying that's, that would be our only recourse, and that's a, that's a blunt tool.
It is a very blunt tool, right? So, um, you know, they've sent information to the town committees, right, um, with the time change from forty-eight hours to seven days, so they're complying with the mass.gov requirement. So any, any, any one of our committees that's obligated to adhere to open meeting law, who chooses to use that building, instead of being able to post only forty-eight hours before the meeting, must post seven, uh, seven days prior to the meeting to give somebody who has accessibility needs or requirements the opportunity to contact somebody in order to get somebody to assist them into the building appropriately.
Okay.
Okay? Um, now, I have also spoken with the library director, because originally, they were gonna spend private monies from the friends at the library to just go ahead and get a more accessible route in for June of this year. That was the original plan. I have since discussed with Brenda that, um, they've, um, reviewed some of the options for doing that and consulted with people with grant writing knowledge and people with knowledge relative to Massachusetts Historical Preservation type, um, both rules, regulations, and laws. And it may be that we may not be obligated to do full ADA compliance accessibility into that building, because not only is it in the historic district, but the building itself is on the historic registry.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So their recommendation now is that we hit pause on the physical changes to the building for accessibility and apply for grant money for a study to determine what level of ADA access is required given the historical status of the building. Which makes sense. So, and it would in particular make sense for us to back off of our edict not to use that for any open meetings, given both, um, the recommendation by the library, which has control over the building, to do a seven-day versus a two-day posting if they choose to use it for an open meeting, and given that, you know, the reason for pausing on the ADA movement forward of the physical changes to the property is due to historical preservation and, and striking the balance between those two competing requi, you know, call it requirements, okay, or call it, you know, needs of the, the community. So my recommendation is that we vote today to allow our, um, committees to use the meeting space if they so choose. If we want to advise them not to do it for something that's like a public hearing, I think that's reasonable, but I think it's an advisement. And I, I do think that we need to send a formal letter to Mr. Holcraft to not harass people, particularly people who are associated with organizations that have no obligation under what he's screeching about, um, to cease and desist. Um, and I think we need to explore, you know, what, um, options we have to curtail the behavior towards, uh, private entities and private people who need to not be treated that way when they're on our public property.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm, I'm in agreement that it would, it seems obvious to me that if the town is allowing a meeting in a space, then the allegation is that the space should not be made available because it's not accessible. It's not the, it's not the problem of group using the room. It's the problem of that. It's like, it's like dealing with my five-year-old, uh, my daughter when she is five years old. It's like, when I said her brother could play switch and she didn't want him to play switch, it's like, she'd get mad at him. It's like, I said he could play switch. You need to talk to me about that. Don't get mad because I said your brother could do something and you don't want him doing it.
Right.
You need to talk to me. Don't, it's like, that's, that's like juvenile behavior.
Right. So, but I, I, I just don't want people to feel threatened on town property when they're doing something for an entity that's not associated with the town and hence don't have any of the obligations that is being indicated.
Now, now, what this means is that in order, to be consistent with your understanding of the open meeting law, the agenda would have to be posted, and it could not be changed inside that seven-day window.
So they could take stuff off, they couldn't put stuff on?
That makes sense to me.
Okay.
And, and that's reasonable. It's like you take something off, you're not making anyone want to get in there.
Correct.
You can't add or change an agenda item.
Right.
But you may remove items from the agenda within seven days. That, that to me is reasonable, because that still means that no one's going to get surprised with a last-minute agenda change within, like, fifty hours out, and all of a sudden it's like...
And, and I would just recommend, rather than taking stuff off, that they would pass it over.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but fundamentally, yes, it would lock their agendas, so...
And I think that, I think that's a, that's a reasonable method of adhering to the law.
Right.
And that is, and that is consistent with, I, I talked to Kathy LaRaca, who had, uh, has been the town's ADA coordinator in the past.
Yep.
And what you're telling me is consistent with what she told me when I discussed this issue with her a couple months ago.
Yep. So, that's what our obligations are.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's an interest of the town to make the best use pro, possible for the community of the properties that we have, right?
Yeah, I mean, right now, we have two main meeting areas. It's like, if you want to meet in the kitchen, that's the third one, but that doesn't hold many people.
No, not anymore.
No.
It was different when the kitchen was a, a fairly big kitchen, right? You know, and a good example was the, the, you know, the historical committee met in the building because of the fact that both here and the police station was taken on a Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, um, you know, we have to conduct business.
Mm-hmm.
And that's one of the ways that we conduct business, is by having a space to conduct business with, so...
Yeah, and with the underst, with the understanding that we need the space, and if someone needs access, it's up to the whoever had intended to use that room if they're asked for an accommodation, then they need to move to another location at a time where the other location's available.
Well, they either, they either need to move to another location, or quite frankly, they can do things like, and, and this is one of the things we can empower our town employees to do. If somebody actually needs an assist in, we could act, you know, we could see if, if our, um, we can go as far as to authorize the EMTs to assist people that need assistance with the stairs.
Mm-hmm, so we're doing the post.
I mean, yeah, I mean, honestly, honestly, that's, that's the, that's what a lot of towns will do for, for things like that, because they either have ramps, or they, they have the knowledge and the capability to move the person and any of their appliances in and out of the building, so...
That's, I didn't think that would be an option, but if it is, then it is.
Well, I know it, I, I know it is when you're doing, I know it is for ADA accessibility when like, um, uh, political committees are doing it, because the, uh, the town committees, both Republican and Democrat, they have to hold their meeting in an ADA accessible space or make sure that there's sufficient, um, assistance available for people that require it.
Because fundamentally, the law is intended to allow participation.
Right.
And therefore, if...
Doesn't have to be convenient. It just has to be that we, that somebody has to get you through the door.
Mm-hmm.
So...
So what's the motion?
So the motion is...
Comments?
Nope. Well, it's your meeting, but my understanding is we're not taking public comment.
I'm sorry, it says discussion on the agenda.
It is discussion among the board, Mr. Vanish, not among, we are, uh, in general, the board is not taking public comment. And at the moment, I, uh, I'd be happy to discuss things with you afterwards.
You're totally avoiding another aspect of the reason we brought Eighteen Common.
Mr. Vanish, we can discuss this afterwards. It's, I, I...
Who's gonna go?
Okay, so, or well...
All right, so, the motion.
So the motion would be, my motion is that, well, I've got two issues that I want to cover. The first is I'd like to make a motion that we reopen Eighteen Common for use by town committees if their chair so chooses.
Subject to...
Subject to the seven-day notice requirement in their means, including freezing their agenda.
Second.
All right, uh, let's see, for discussion, if, there's another motion. Can you give me a hint as what it's gonna be, just?
Uh...
You said there were gonna be two, and you gave me the first one.
Well, that's what, what I...
I'm not asking you to make the motion, I'm just telling, it's like, all right, I'm good with, I'm good with this one. It's just like, eh. All right, is there any, and among the board, is there any discussion amongst, on Beth's motion?
No.
All right, uh, let's see, I, then, all in favor of Beth's motion, please say aye.
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 And your next motion?
My next motion is that I would like to make a motion that we consult with KP regarding our options about the perception that we have a public official harassing private individuals on the property and identify what our options are relative to impacting that behavior.
That's the motion?
Yep.
Second.
Okay, uh, let's see. I'm getting ahead of myself in my head, but...
You are getting ahead of yourself in your head. That's the motion. That's all the motion is, is that we consult with the lawyer.
I know, I know, but, uh... To talk, to talk to the lawyer. Uh, let's see, I am, all right, if there, uh...
Can I consider this a written complaint?
Yes.
Okay, I consider this...
That's pretty clear.
A written complaint.
Mm-hmm.
I would like to consult KP regarding this written complaint about what our options are.
Okay, then, fair enough.
So...
All right, all in favor of Beth's motion to, to talk to KP Law about the situation? As, as she mentioned, please say aye.
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 And that's what I got.
All right. All right, it's quarter of, I'm...
If we go quickly, we can bang out the things after.
Everything done, yeah. We can, we can skip over number five until seven o'clock, since it was listed for seven o'clock. And then, oh, and just so the, I don't know if all the board members know, but the, uh, the advisory committee did not post their meeting, so they will not be meeting with us in session.
Okay, so the fact that Mr. Vanish left is not a huge issue?
No.
No, it actually helps the case.
Yes, it helps our case.
I had a brief explanation. I was moving meetings and I posted it, and I didn't. We met yesterday, and so it's my screw-up totally, but I've talked to all the committee members. They're okay. And so, um, we'll go ahead with what we have as an individual, or whatever. If you have questions...
So when, when the time comes, we will be able to have a productive discussion. It just will not be with the entire advisor committee.
Roger.
And no decisions can be made.
Well, no decisions for them.
Right, for them.
Yes, but for you, yes.
All right, but, but first, Agenda item number four, special municipal employees. And so, uh, we, in, at a past meeting, we made a, the board voted to, um, name employee, uh, name employees special municipal employees. And the matter in front of us is to, um, refine that and to specifically name which employees are designated as special municipal employees.
Okay, so, so I have a, I have a, I have a problem with the way this has all been phrased.
Okay.
I'm gonna just tell you straight up. So the motion was, we would come back to enumerate the positions unless exempted by law, okay? We have a list of names in front of us, okay? We never should have collected a list of names. What we need is to define which positions are the special positions that allow for multiple appointments. It's that simple. I don't understand why we scrambled to get a list of employees when tomorrow Matthew Graves could say, I don't want to be a volunteer fire or EMT person again. We could put somebody else on who's a volunteer fire EMT person, and then that person wouldn't be covered by this vote today.
Right, or if they were to go into a role...
That is exempted by law, right?
That is, right.
Exactly. So what we need is the positions. So, um, I know we said in the not-too-distant future, I guess our wheels turn slow, but that's okay, right? Is there any reason why this is a, it says Kelly requested the names to be listed, but that's, that's not actually what we voted.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Can you tell just by looking at these to read off the positions, or should we come back with them?
I think we need to come back with them, and we have to double-check
Yeah.
that they're not excluded positions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I agree. We need to...
Yeah.
Because if we, we could vote this, and we could accidentally vote in opposition to, um, one of the provisions that does, is exempted by law, so I, I think we need to understand what those exemptions are. So I would, I, I'd make a motion that we pass this over for tonight and revisit it once we've sorted that out, or have a town administrator that can sort it out for us.
Second. All right, all in favor of passing this matter over and revisiting it at a future date, please say aye.
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 All right, and since we are not yet at seven o'clock, can I get a motion to take the agenda out of order?
Make a motion to take the agenda out of order and finish the rest of our business.
Second.
All right, all in favor of taking the agenda out of order, please say aye.
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 All right, we're gonna skip number five. We're gonna go to number six. Carryover time, vacation time for Mike Duval. And Mike and, let's see, you've got, so Mike Duval in the Highway Department. They have been short-staffed for a good chunk of the fiscal year, so I'm...
Although I, his math is entertaining, because he says he has just over three weeks when he has nearly four, so...
Okay.
That's a match.
I didn't, I didn't even look that closely. It's like...
And while I just, I am so glad that this is on camera, because it saves me from saying some of the things that pop into my head, so... Oh, goodness.
All right, so I will, I will take, I will take a motion to allow that carryover.
I, I'll, I'm gonna make a motion to allow the carryover, but I do want to have some discussion before... I, I'll, I'm gonna make a motion to allow the carryover, but I do wanna have some discussion before we vote.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, second.
Okay, uh, discussion.
So historically speaking, what we have started to do with people is tell them, like, how much time does he have with the town, do you know?
Duval?
Oh, gosh, many, so like, how many, how much, how much vacation? No, Mike doesn't have.
No.
Oh, how long has he been here?
Under ten, I think.
Yeah, so I don't know how much vacation time he gets, but one of the things, one of the things that we put into place previously was that they couldn't.
There's a cap on the rol-, on rollover?
Well, it wasn't really a cap on rollover, it was that we'd allow the rollover, but give them a target of what the max rollover they would be allowed the following year.
Yes, a, 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 a burn down.
Yeah, so, like, I, like, um, so I made the motion to approve it, I'd like to make a, I'd like to make an amendment that we approve it with the understanding that he won't be allowed to carry over more than a hundred and, uh, let's see here, hundred and forty, uh, forty hours next year. So he has to use all of his vacation plus thirteen hours of what he's carrying over in this next coming year.
Okay, that's, Brad, that's a motion to amend the motion?
Uh, s- second.
Okay.
Do you wanna discuss?
Yeah, discuss.
Yeah, so, so discussion of the motion to, to, to amend the motion to put the, um, the cap as to how much he needs to, uh, the maximum that we will entertain.
Not, not this year, but for next.
Yes, for next year, yes.
I would just be cautious of the rules with rollovers and stuff like that and talk with either HR or the tre-, I mean, we don't have HR.
Well, we're not obligated to rollover.
Okay.
We have nothing in our, so we have nothing in our bylaws and we have nothing in our employee handbook that says that we're gonna allow rollover.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm totally good with rolling over, I'm just concerned.
Well, now, historic, and, and historically, we just rollover.
Yeah.
Everything without any end, without anything, and a couple of years ago, we started saying, you can rollover, but next year, we'll only entertain a rollover of so much.
Right, and given the circumstances, this makes sense, I just wanna make sure we don't run into it like, hey, he was allowed to do it a couple of years ago.
Well, there's, there's precedence that we started, like, giving, we, we started giving a, hey, we're gonna let you roll what you have this year.
Yeah.
But there's a cap to what you can do next year, make sure you burn it down.
Right, right.
We did it with Don, we did it with Donnie Hebert.
Okay.
Before he retired, because we knew he was retiring and started rolling a whole crap load of vacation over and it's like, wait, we know you're gonna be taking it at the end, you need to start taking some of it now.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
So, um, it is consistent with what we've done in the past, right? It was a little bit of a shift and because we're not, and, and that's why I did like some quick math in my head. And, and a hundred and thirty is basically, he gets to rollover like a little bit more than eighty percent, it's like eighty-five percent of what he has now.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not like we're saying, oh, you have to take like all your, you know, all of your rollover vacation, you just have to use all of your current, you'll have to use all of your next year's vacation and burn down like, you know, two days of what you carried over first.
And hopefully we have more people working there, especially that he can take time off.
I would tend to, to ask him to, or instruct him to burn it down faster, I would.
Well, but he's gotta, he's gonna have his next year vacation too, so the prob, the, the, that, so then it's a case of like, how much vacation do you really want your highway person to take?
Yeah, but my thought, my thought is that at least saying, it's like, burn down the balance of a week, if he's at one fifty-three, he has.
Almost four weeks.
He, he, he has nineteen, effectively nineteen days of vacation.
Yep.
And saying, okay, well, then, for next year, fifteen, and even then, it's gonna take four years for him to, to, at, at, if we did, if we then did it one week a year, from one twenty would be eighty and then forty and then he'd be done rolling it over, which to me is, that to me is long, takes longer to burn it down than I would prefer. It just, it just seems like just saying, get down to one forty, it's, we're not, we're just gonna be, he's gonna be in position to roll it all over next year saying, yeah, I burned it down to one forty like you said.
As long as he's not trying to bring us one eighty next year, I really am not all that upset about it.
Well, I, to, to my mind, but if he's, I think that's, I, I don't like the precedent we're setting of letting him carry such a big balance so far into the future. To my mind, I would, I would rather, see, I would rather clear, if you will, clear this off the books sooner. And so, and my thought is telling, is saying, we're gonna chop it down by a week every year is not an unreasonable ask, because basically, assuming he gets.
So what's the, so you, so you're thinking one thirteen?
I'm, I'm saying, I, I would make it easy in saying, bring it to one twenty, and then after that, we do forty hour chunks, because the thought is, I don't know how much vacation it's, let's say he got four weeks of vacation this year. It's like, he's carrying over almost four weeks, so he's gonna go next seven, we're expecting him to then use five weeks of vacation. And then he come, and then he'll come up, come, come out with, he'll have, effectively be carrying three weeks over next year. If, and, and if he burns it faster, that's great, but we're telling him, you need to take all of your twenty twenty-five vacation and burn through a week at that clock.
Okay, you know what, the difference between one thirty and one twenty, I'm not gonna fight over, so I'll, I'll, can I, can I revise my motion? Or I'll make an amendment to my motion, amendment to the amendment?
I don't, I don't think you make an amendment to an amendment, can we, can we just, can we just deny the motion and then you make another one?
Yeah, okay, let's, let's, let's.
Okay, all in favor of Beth's motion to, um, to add the requirement that he, uh, burn down the vacation to, uh, a hundred and forty hours by the end of next year, please say aye. All opposed, say no.
No.
Right.
Beth, would you like to make another amendment?
Yeah, let's, uh, I'd like to, uh, uh, make a motion that we, uh, amend that to putting a, a hundred and twenty day limit on his rollover next fiscal year.
Mm-hmm, alright, second?
Second.
Alright, uh, okay, uh, and I think we discussed this to death, so, uh, all, all in.
For the board. You said a hundred and twenty day.
A hundred and twenty, thank you, twenty, twenty hours.
May, may the record indicate a hundred and twenty hours is the intention of the board?
Yes.
Is that, uh, is that, so all, all in favor of, uh, the amendment to a, uh, put a, put a limit of a hundred and twenty hours on the, uh, rollover next year, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright, Karen, please make sure that the minutes reflect our, our intention.
Hours, not days.
Our intention of walking down that over in following years. Thank you.
It's like analysis.
So now, so now we have, so we now have an amended motion to allow the carryover with the stipulation of a, of a maximum amount that we will entertain carrying over next year.
Yep.
Um, which is a hundred and twenty hours.
Hours.
Yes, alright, is there any further discussion on that?
Yeah.
Alright, um, all in favor of the motion to allow carryover with the, uh, with the limit of how much we carry it over next year, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And we are now primed for the next discussion with Lindsay's carryover. So this, Lindsay's.
She's easier.
Lindsay's at sixty-two hours.
Right.
Which is.
Basically two weeks.
Yes. And so I would say, using, using Mike's, um, using our previous discussion as a template, um, we would probably just, um, want to figure out what we want to, uh, the target we want for next year. And I'm thinking twenty-eight hours, it's a little, it's a little more than a week for her to burn down, but it gets her to one, gets her down to one week next year.
I think that's too aggressive though for.
Okay, I, I'm.
So we, we're only burning down a week if somebody that's got four.
Mm-hmm.
If we've got somebody that's got two, it should be probably three or four days worth of hours, so I would put the max at, what's sixty-two minus twenty-four?
No, I would say she has less vacation, so she needs less time to burn it down, I wouldn't say there's.
Well, it's, it's a. I'm just trying to keep the ratio consistent in terms of weeks of work.
Mm-hmm.
So forty hours is a week of work for him, twenty-eight hours is a week of work for her.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think telling her to take a week less, like, have a week less by the time she gets through the end of the year makes sense.
Well, she has sixty-three hours, which is.
She has sixty-two hours, if you subtract twenty-eight hours from that, it's.
That's, that's, for her, that's two weeks and, and six hours, that's, that's three eight-hour days, my understanding is she works three eight-hour days plus four hours.
Okay, so, so it's, it's basically, like you said, two weeks for her.
Mm-hmm.
Like, we ask him to do one-fourth of his, so one-fourth of hers would be... Gosh, I wish my brain actually still worked these days.
Sixteen is the closest number.
Fifteen and a half.
Fifteen or sixteen, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I guess, I guess that's, that's the different approach I'm taking, you're thinking to give them both the same amount of time to burn it down. And my approach is, they should be burning it down at about a week per year, and therefore, since she has less carryover, she should burn, she should burn it down faster. Or she should burn it down in fewer years.
I think then you're treating the employees differently.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't thi, I, but I don't think it's onerous to say, every year, you get, you, you have to work through one week of your backlog every year. She has less to carry over, is, she's getting treated differently because she has a, she has a different carryover amount, not because I'm applying a consistent, I, I feel the, the expectation is consistent that you reduce your backlog by about a week every year. I see your point, that you could also say, we expect you to burn through your, we expect you to, to work through your backlog within X number of years. I think both are, both are valid frameworks, I think you're just, you're just thinking giving the same amount of time, but I'm saying giving the same rate.
So, yeah, well, and so, yeah, and, and so my issue with it is, once upon a time, not that long ago, because we really only started putting these restrictions in place a couple of years ago. People could rollover months of vacation, for years, right? It's a horrible practice, right? But I don't think, I, I think we can, like, peel that back slowly, because a lot of, a lot of the folks who have this vacation, to Brad's point, right? It's not that they don't wanna take their vacation, it's that when you're on a really short-staffed department, right? You have a tendency not to take the time off if you feel obligated to get the work done.
Mm-hmm.
I don't wanna put Lindsay in a position, just because she works fewer hours a week, to have to take a greater percentage of her overall work hours off in a period of time when they're understaffed, transitioning superintendents, and I could, do, she's covering for other departments right now. I don't think it's sensible of us to force her to take that extra vacation.
But if they're both, but if the general rule is they're both expected to work, work down their, their backlog by a week every year, then everyone's wo-, working through the same percentage of their work hours, they're, they're.
No, they're not, because she hasn't accumulated as much, so, she's still gotta take all of her vacation from this year coming, plus take a couple, at least a couple of extra days.
Right, but, but that means that, but effectively, if you work fifty-two weeks a year and you are expected to reduce your vacation backlog by a week a year, then you have, everyone is going to have one extra, take one extra week of vacation, and that's the same whether they work four hours or twenty.
I think we're actually hurting, potentially hurting the town as well. At the end of the day, it doesn't hurt the person to tell them to go take the vacation, because they're getting paid.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't think it's really smart at this point to give that direction personally.
Mm-hmm.
It's only a couple of days difference hypothetically, she only works four days a week, so, we're, right now, we're fighting over twelve hours of, of work. But I, I still think percentage-wise, I think we need to drive it by a percentage-wise instead of by a arbitrary of the week, depending on how much time they're doing.
And so, I mean, it's not a hill I'm worth dying on.
So.
It's like, I've, 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 I've fought enough and it's like, alright, fought is the strong word, I have discussed my point and, with as much as I, as I think is necessary in that y- your, your proposal is valid, it makes sense, it's not the way I would approach it, but it's not that important, it's important that we supplement it and we move it down, so.
I think the reality is, is once we have enough people down there, I'm sure she's gonna take off some time.
Right, or somebody fill, filling the grant writer role, or any of the other things that she's helping us with right now.
Yeah.
So, uh, I don't wanna put her in a position where it's like she has to basically flip us the bird and take some vacation time because we need your help.
Right.
You know, because that's what, that's the position we're putting ourselves in by telling her to take the extra week.
So, e- effectively, we are setting the expectation in general that if there's carryover, we're going to be off, that, that.
That she can't carry over more than forty-six next year.
Right, but that in general, we're, we're, we're going to be looking to offer people four years to work through their, their backlog.
Yep.
No matter, it's like, my thought is if someone's looking to carry over a couple of days, we might not be consistent with that. If someone wants to carry over three days because they didn't get all their vacation paid.
I, I think, I think, I think, yes, I think you could deal with hypotheticals all day long, but right now, I'm mostly concerned with never again having to approve two hundred and forty days of carryover, which I have seen at one point with the town.
Yes, I think we are all in, in agreement.
Or two hundred and forty hours, whatever, you know what I mean? We actually had somebody that was close to six months of vacation at one point. I think that's where.
It's like one week.
So I think, I think I started the discussion without the motion, so.
So, okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve her carryover with a, a, uh, some wording that she not exceed forty-six hours next, of carryover next year.
Second.
Thank you, um, and that's sixteen hours, that's a sixteen-hour reduction?
If my math is good.
Forty-six, sixty-two.
Sixty-two minus sixteen, I believe, is.
Is forty-six in my head, alright, I'm good, any further discussion? All in favor of, uh, the motion for Lindsay's carryover, please say aye.
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 And we are now at seven oh eight, we have, uh, gone further than that, alright, so, um.
The last thing we have is the request to deficit spend snow and ice?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm, let's, let's bang that out and then we'll jump to advisory, because I think civic plus.
I'll make a motion to approve the deficit spending of, um, snow and ice of nine thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy cents for wages and two thousand three hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents for expenses.
Second.
Alright, and thank you, and Beth, to clarify, those are the remaining balances in the account, they are not yet at deficit spending.
Okay.
That they are, they need, my understanding is they need, they need authorization to deficit spend before the accounts go into deficit. And then therefore, we are still positive balance, but just in case there's a freak snowstorm, they don't wanna be caught short.
Got it, alright.
We're just allowing them.
Oh, we're just allowing, I know, okay, I thought they needed that amount.
No, because in, in expense account, you cannot deficit spend without, it's like they need our authorization to deficit spend the expense account, they could deficit spend the wages account, because MGL allows that. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor of authorizing the highway department to deficit spend the snow and ice accounts, if needed, please say aye.
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 There we go. And now the budget. Karen?
Yes.
Does our sta-, does our copy put the stapler here?
No, the electric.
Or is that you?
The electric stapler does, that's why I put the stapler down. The electric one doesn't do a corner, because you can't stick a corner in there, so if you don't like it over.
I, I'm, I'm not a fan.
I can, I can.
It's okay, it's okay.
I'm a manual stapler, stapler paper's what it comes.
Alright, we double, double A.
So basically, we give her six percent.
Alright, and, uh, alright, and, and for the audience at home, I think we mentioned it before, but the, uh, the advisory committee is, uh, not in session because they, uh, they are not in a posted meeting, so they're in a meeting with a non-form amount of members, um, for a discussion with them, um, but it will be a productive discussion. So, um, hi Jeff, hi Sarah.
Hi.
Um, for priority, I would like us to do the warrant articles first, because the warrant book and the article language will need to go to the lawyer for review. And I think the budget is less likely to need the, the lawyers to look it over, I think just the accountant looking it over will be sufficient, and that's more in her wheelhouse anyway. And so just if we run up against time, which I hope we don't get cut short, but I wanna do what needs to get done first, first. So, um, the select board has already reviewed the, uh, the money articles for the warrant, and, um, we, we, we have made our initial recommendations and. And we, we, we have made our initial recommendations and does the, has the advisory come up with any recommend, have you made your recommendations on the articles?
Yes.
Okay, and so, so if so.
We started.
Are you?
We, we, we have had an initial discussion, we got all this information late, we were working on the budget. We went over the line item, Excel spreadsheet. Um, and, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we were basically in agreement with what Beth had recommended at the last select meeting that had been noted on by the select people as far as, um, how to get under the, how to get all the articles into the free cash that was available. Since that discussion, we have not taken a vote, but I believe that we would have a negative, not go along with the purchase by whatever method of the backhoe. Everything else, I believe we would vote yes. So, that's the only item that we had any particular issue.
Okay, so you all are advising against the backhoe?
Right, as far as the, we haven't taken the official vote, I'm saying for the, I've, I've taken unofficial vote.
Okay.
It's probably gonna be three, two, so that's no.
All right, well, I mean, that's their purview, they don't have to, they're advising and they're advising no on the backhoe.
Yep, and that's.
We had a further, um.
Just for curiosity sake, what's the, what's the reason for it?
Two things, fur- further, um, Bob Barnes was very, was expressly against using debt to purchase the backhoe. Then he said that, um, they could still work whatever the, the machine that they have down there now. They could still use it because it was simple enough for the people that were there to be able to work it. Otherwise, it goes back to the, the dealer and he charges an arm and a leg. So, Bob again is always for, you know, saving money. So, he felt that we could still use what we had, plus the mileage on the, on the, whatever we have is fairly low. I think it's still within range of what, um, is acceptable. So, given all the other items that were there, he said, or they.
I believe there's some structural issues with the machine.
Yeah, I'm iffy on my vote. My vote depends on a couple of things. So, I'm gonna get with Gary and meet with him while I'm wanting to talk about the backhoe, to get more information, to decide mine, for sure.
I mean, they did patching it all along, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I saw, I saw it while they still had it ripped apart when they were rebuilding it over this last winter. And I know I'm not down there a lot, but, and I'm very familiar with the maintenance that one does on those things. And you can only rip those hydraulics apart and put them back together so many times. Before you wind up dumping more money into it than what it's worth, quite frankly.
Right.
So, and that one's already pretty much, so if you were doing the, if you were a private corporation and you were doing the decision making on the, the fix or replace, you would replace on that one. And I don't think, I don't know if Bobby understood that we're act, and I know that there are people that objected to using chapter ninety for, um, purchasing equipment. I think our intent was to go ahead and lease using chapter ninety, since it's not enough money to actually do any real paving.
He, he was the most eloquent that I've heard him in six years, uh, in his denial of using that, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
But, uh, again, that, that's.
What are you saying, don't use chapter ninety and borrow for it?
Don't, don't use.
Don't use either.
Yeah.
Oh.
He doesn't, he doesn't want to borrow.
No, he doesn't want to borrow and he doesn't want to use chapter ninety.
So.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but again, it's, it's a tough call. If we actually come down with a vote with this further information, it might go the other way, but right now, we're, we're three, two, so.
Jeff, I have a question. I'm, I'm looking at the numbers and to, to square the circle, um, and the select board decided to, um, to look at, um, taking the backhoe out of, um, off of free cash and either chapter ninety or debt. Um, we just took the fuel system off the table and we proposed moving seventy-five thousand dollars from capital stabilization to the roof stabilization. So, that basically remove all three from the, from the drain. And then, so that gives us, and that left us at third, by my numbers here, that leaves us at thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and change. Now.
Is this your spreadsheet or am I not looking at the right thing?
Um, I added these columns for my analysis. I, I, I added them in, so, it's like, and so, but if we did, if we put the forty thousand dollars for that highway wants for the new fuel dispensing system in, back in, that would more than exceed our, our free cash. And so, what did you have in mind, since you said you thought to leave that in? What, what other changes were you making to the warrant articles in order to keep us under?
We were concerned about the tree warden, the fifty-five, or the tree fifty-five thousand, where we already had forty thousand from last year that hasn't been used.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, we had some question, I'm not sure if it was a question or an issue on the, um, the green street thing, why we needed the extra fifty-four. But those, we just, we didn't have enough information to be able to say one way or the other.
The, the green, the green street is because we, we need the money to finish the project. The project, the project is in progress and my understanding, and what do we use to fund that? Is that a grant?
Yeah, the grant, so I think, yes, I think the question was just, why was the, why was the difference between the grant and what we need so much? Like, wh- why was the grant short so much? I think that was the only question that we wanted to ask.
I, I believe because the cost of everything has gone way the heck up.
That's my assumption.
When the grant, when the grant was authorized. And then, when we got around to doing the project, the cost of things in that interval was, resulted in the construction costs being higher than expected. And so, in order to get it done, we have, we have to put out more money to get the project done.
Okay.
And so, the grant, the grant money does not cover as big a part of the project as we want, we have to put some more of our money in.
Okay.
And so, that, that is, that is why that's there. My understanding of the trees is that the, the tree money was being expended, I would say solely at first. We had Dennis in, um, I think at the beginning, near the beginning of the year, to ask him about this. And the, the explanation he gave was that, um, after we authorized the money, it was a little slow getting on to Rusty's schedule. But it, what he said was that, um, was that we should expect to see that, we should have expected to see that pick up over the winter.
And doing the warrants, I see it all the time right now.
Yeah, where, do you know where we are on that account?
No.
All right, I will, I may be able to find it.
What's her?
But every warrant I've been signing, he's got invoices in there.
What is the status of the, of the warrant article account for tree work?
Oh, good, so he is expending his.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, I'll be honest, when I looked at it first, I was concerned that we had allocated this money and no one was doing anything with it.
Yeah.
And, and Dennis said that, no, we've been getting started and he was expecting it to accelerate, just based on our ability to get the vendor in to do the work.
Okay.
And so, therefore, it's like, and.
I just wanted to make sure that he had a plan, yeah, a plan for the money, yeah.
If we're not spending the money, why put more money in the account?
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, it's a fair question.
Yeah, he had a good amount, I thought he had like twenty grand or something, so.
Yeah, and the amount of trees.
And I think he marked like a hundred and, over a hundred dead trees.
He has more than enough trees on the list to spend every penny we have and then, so.
Okay, tree warden expens- is this right?
So, is.
Oh, no, I can't see what's in the.
More trees or the same amount of trees or costs have gone up or?
Um, I think it's more money because the money that's, that we allocated the last time we put money in the tree warden, in the, for taking care of trees, is not enough to take care of all the trees that we have. And I think we always knew that there was not enough money to take care of the problem, but it was a, we have a problem, we need to put some money in this so we can start, so that we are taking down more trees than die. And I suspect in the next three or four weeks, you're gonna be able to pick out which trees are dead, because they're gonna be the ones that don't have the leaf spot.
I mean, the regular tree warden expense only has twelve hundred dollars in it, but he, he's using money that was already set aside and I don't know if that's in this expenditure.
Yeah, so the annual town meeting, yeah, the, the, yeah, the four-four report, there was, he had only spent, fourteen-four of the fifty-four thousand dollars that was in.
That's what we were looking at when we just.
Right, but, but it's, it's tree cutting season, so between now and town meeting, they're, they're likely to spend most of that forty grand.
And like, they've spent a lot, because they've been seeing it on the warrants.
It just hasn't been invoiced yet, I mean, it's.
No, a lot of them have been invoiced, yeah.
As I say, if, yeah, if he's seeing it on the warrant, it's been invoiced.
But it, but it's not from this tree account, it's from the money that was, I don't know where.
Oh, no, oh, he's, he's from the operating budget, probably.
Right, right.
Yeah, so the, so he spent a total so far this year, basically, if you include his operating budget, which they would spend first.
Yep.
And the warrant, so they've spent twenty, what, six thousand almost?
Okay, all right, so he has.
Year-to-date.
Yeah.
And, and we're going into the second tree cutting season.
Season, yeah, I was gonna say, the weather hasn't been nice and, yeah, so now, okay, so they'll expend all of it, okay.
Yeah, the operating budget tree warden expense account has well hundred sixty dollars in it.
Yeah.
So, it is ninety percent expended. So, given that, I would say the, the remaining trees being, so he has been removing trees.
Yeah, he might, he might not get all the way through forty thousand, but I'd put money that he'll have between twenty and thirty. It'll be between twenty and thirty, it'll be done before the.
That, that's fine, I mean, as I said, we, we're, we're in agreement with the warrant, we're, we're sticking our sword, or the committee is on that, on that, the backhoe, that's, it'll.
We can let the town decide. I mean, that's, that's one of those ones where we can recommend it and you can recommend against it and we let the town decide, because we.
And we always do.
It's fine, hopefully this year, we'll get our little things involved in the warrant rather than last year, so. If someone asks a question, we'll let Bob, you know.
Talk to it, yeah.
Yeah.
Did, can you remind me, did we, did we, the thermal imaging device, did we recommend that or did, for that or against that?
I thought we recommended for everything that was placed.
Okay, everything but, yeah, uh, just, okay.
We recommended pulling off the three items we needed to pull off to actually, um, well, not so much pull off, as shift it from coming from free cash. And I can send you all a sheet, I fixed the formulas on that when I was doing it, when, when we did the math.
Pull it off, you, pull, pull it out of the free cash bucket and put it in a different bucket.
No, no, that's working, I, I.
I fixed the formula.
So, Jeff.
No, you gotta fix the, um, column. Pause, oh, no, actually, when it says value, that's.
So, I must have done it on my own copy, not, not shared it back, so I'll share it back to y'all.
So, are you all working on the same budget spreadsheet that Kelly originally made?
Um, them, no, I am, I'm working off Kelly's, the one that, the one that's in our share folder.
I'm working off the one that Karen sent me earlier today.
From the shared folder.
Yes.
Okay, so, but I did, I asked, I asked Karen to send them copies of what we have, they don't have access to the online copies, Fred, but they do have access.
Are you sure that sounded like Karen sent them the action?
Yeah, okay. All right, as long as we're looking at it.
No, what happens, yeah, I saved it, I sent it to them, I didn't, they can't.
Coming back to the question, if in your calculations, by taking backhoe out of free cash and taking roof stabilization out of free cash, that still, if you leave the fuel system at forty thousand dollars, that still leaves us with free cash overcommitted by about two thousand dollars.
We, we hadn't even considered the fuel since we took it off of the warrants.
Yeah, we never considered.
We can't recommend if it's not on the warrants.
Okay, all right, so, so that was.
We would like the fuel system in there if possible, but since it was taken out of the warrants, we didn't consider it.
Okay, that, okay, that's, okay, that's, that's the part I was missing, thank you. Um, I do know that, um.
We would be happy to, to vote it in if you decide filing some other two thousand dollars somewhere and say, hey, let's do it.
Yeah, um, let's see, I do know that, um, in, I received an email from Gary, I think the other members on the board were, uh.
Well, if you're looking for two thousand dollars.
I mean, two thousand dollars we have, I thought it was quite a bit more than that.
So, one of the questions I had in here was the survey and permanent marking, and we'd have to talk to Don, um, Don. Survey and permanent marking, six hundred and one high watermark on state-owned dam. Didn't Don send an email that he was getting that? I gotta look at that email. He sent an email. But I thought someone was doing it at no cost, but maybe I read that wrong.
Does, does that help you talk with, I think.
No, 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 that, that, that explains, that explains why, since, since you, you just said it's off the project and so you weren't counting it against free cash.
Yes.
That's why, and so, and I understand, it's like, and so, what I wanted to do is I wanted to talk, I wanted the board to talk about, um, whether we want to reconsider that. Just given what I recall Gary's, um, sharing with us, his perception of the urgency there. Is that he thought, he thought it was important, I, I was, and I'll be honest, I, it's like, what he said was like, okay, I can understand why they're asking for that. And it's much less of the nice to have than I was originally thinking it was.
Well, I, I sort of changed my mind when I saw someone kind of be on Lindsay's.
Loaner.
Yeah, obviously, yeah.
Are you that way, they have it?
And.
Yeah, so there will be no cost. Am I reading that right?
No, you're reading correctly, actually.
Later, I remember he said before it was more a nice to have, but based on everything he, he listed there, I thought that, that, I was able to, you know, process that well, and I thought that was a good expenditure.
Yeah, Brad, what?
So, this email here that Don sent?
Yeah.
Uh, this will be done at no cost to the town of Brooklyn, for the survey.
The, the surveying and the signs?
Oh, I don't know about.
Because they're surveying and there's permanent marking. And so, if he found someone to do the surveying, it's like, great.
Do you want me to check the column, Rob?
Yeah, check them, because that's in the text. I mean, my thought is, if we really wanted to make this happen, we could probably find some money in the budget, in, in the, in the free cash allocations to make this work. I mean, if nothing else, just shifting a little bit of money out of the tree work and over with, in my, and my current calculations, would give us enough free cash to then contemplate to, to allow us to bring the pumps back in. It would leave us very little after that, we'd have very little margin in our, it's like, like very, very tight. But it's like, if that's what it is, that's what it is.
Yeah, so, if, if somebody wants them. So, let's do this.
Don usually comes to these meetings.
They, they went right to his voice, oh.
Okay, that's probably because he's got something to do.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I don't know if this is the shared one or not, but I'm gonna, I fixed it on one copy and then, um, no, it's not there anymore, so.
So, you were saying even if you did, you know, fifty rather than fifty-five, that might be enough to swing.
Yeah, because it's like, with, without, without the, my calculations show that without the fuel system, we would have thirty-seven thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars of free cash unallocated, that would just roll over to next year. So, five thousand dollars would push that to forty-two and change, which would then give us enough to put the fuel system in and leave us with almost three thousand dollars of, as very thin cushion.
Yeah, thin, thin, thin.
But that's all you really need, I mean, really, the, I mean, usually you want to leave like five to fifteen, but it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, and, and my thinking is, is that, I think right now, we more need to decide what's in the boat and what's out of the boat. And if we want to, if we want to shift the numbers, the lawyers don't need to review us shifting the numbers, they just need to review the verbiage and we.
No, they don't, and that's why I'm always, always, always advocating for, um, the generic language in all the money articles.
Yeah, with, yeah, with the money, with the money in the description, not in the official article text itself.
Correct.
No, I, I'm behind that.
Okay, let me just. So, and what's the, what's the?
It's gonna, it's gonna be easier to the other way.
So, I get that we have twelve thousand dollars remaining in free cash.
After.
So, I just.
After putting the fuel, the fuel pumps back in?
That's fine.
Oh, no, fuel pumps back in would get us over.
Okay, what's your starting number, five forty-four, four ninety?
Yeah, five forty-four, four ninety.
And library at twenty-five thousand, line painting at ten.
Yeah.
The backhoe was one seventy-nine.
But it's, but it's under borrow.
Right, and then road construction, twenty-five.
So, he actually emailed this, Gary emailed about the backhoe to Marty. He didn't include the rest of your board. Should I forward it over to him?
Yeah, I sent it to him.
Right, um.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was actually today it happened.
So, gravel for private roads on three thousand.
Okay.
OPEB at fifty thousand, um, roof stabilization came out of free cash, but that was seventy-five thousand. Green street at fifty-four thousand, tree work is currently fifty-five. Thermal imaging, one eleven thousand, protective clothing for the firefighters, twenty-five thousand. Air compressor, eighty-two thousand.
Sir.
Elevators, seventy-six thousand. Fire alarm for town hall, eighty thousand. Skipping heat coat entry system, flower beds, seven, hundred, five hundred seventy-five. Roller rink, eight thousand, and survey markers. Skipping heat coat entry system, flower beds seven hundred, five hundred seventy-five, roller rink eight thousand and survey markers two thousand.
Okay, so that leaves us thirty-seven thousand nine hundred fifteen.
Thirty-seven, nine-one-five is my number also.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so, so our numbers are in alignment. And so what I would, what I would like to do, or what I'd like us to consider doing is to reduce. For now, we're reducing tree work to fifty thousand dollars, let's. As a placeholder, put the fuel system back on and we ask Gary and Pete to come in next week. And talk to us about.
Did you guys see, did you guys see the email from today?
No.
Okay.
I have, uh, I, if it if it came in after two o'clock, I have not seen.
Came in at twelve thirty-four.
Okay, well, did it go to me?
No, it didn't actually.
Well, then I guess that's why I didn't see it, right?
That's why you guys didn't see it, it only went to me and Marty for some reason.
Send to you? Why, no, that I didn't.
Is it relative to the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, so would you mind sharing it?
Yeah. I just assumed it went to everyone.
But my, but my thinking is that.
Which Marty probably assumed it went to everyone.
And we can, thinking ahead, we can send the warrant to the lawyer for review with the fuel pump article in it. And if we decide we don't want to do it, we just pull it out. And if we decide to do it, it's in what's been reviewed by the lawyer and we're, and it gives us the flexibility to include it going forward. With the option to pull it out if we at a later date decide, yeah, we don't want to do this. Just, just given what Highway's saying is the the urgency they shared, I don't wanna go forward and lose the opportunity to put it back in.
This is actually more about the fuel system.
It's about the fuel system.
Right, that's what I discussed.
Alright, and I am getting my.
But in the email below, there's the information about the backhoe.
Yeah, the the other question, if you may speak, the um. What what we had originally heard when we had the uh presentation from Gary was that. Uh he was gonna ask for a net number, but then he asked, there's, there's two articles, one is for the, the trade-in value and then there's the other one for the actual. Purchase price, I was wondering why there wasn't just going for the net value rather than having to do the, is it. You you have to authorize the sale or the trade-in to the, to the dealer, is that how it works?
I would say that author, I would say separate articles make sense because you wanna authorize the full purchase price because you don't know how much you're gonna get on trade-in. Unless you are positive and there's a solid market for trade-in and very liquid and you know what you're gonna get, cause otherwise, if you, if you ask for net. And you don't get enough in trade-in, you don't have enough money to buy.
Well, it's in the contract, it said, we'll give you the trade-in, we'll buy it from you for the twenty-four thousand, whatever it is, and yet that was, was. It was just a question.
He already, he already has a contract offer that he can just execute on with.
Well, was it, was it invoice or?
Well, yeah, and you, and and so here's the thing, you can't, yeah, yeah, you can't guarantee what the, what the net's gonna be, so. All of the articles would be not to exceed if they don't spend the full amount. So you you got a lot bigger problem if you're ten thousand dollars short on like a purchase price for a piece of equipment. Than if you're ten thousand dollars over, if you're ten thousand dollars over on an, on a warrant article. All that happens is that when you sweep the accounts, the next year it comes back to you. Um and actually with the, with the article accounts, you have to vote it back out again or vote it into another. You have to vote it into, yeah, anything that was voted as a town meeting article, the only way you can get the residual out is to vote it out of that article.
My understanding was that if the article had completed, if the purpose of the article had been completed, it could be automatically swept, like it's. If it's an article that purchased a piece of equipment, once the equipment's bought, leftover money goes out.
I've heard it both ways.
I mean, and I know we don't vote a lot of articles out of existence.
We used to, we may have gotten out of that habit, I think Lori looked into the gasp, and it allows them the sweep if it's. If it's truly residual, right.
Yeah, my, my question was just more from a technical person, why were there two more articles rather than just one for the net, but that, that answers it, sounds.
Yeah, I mean, it it just doesn't, it just doesn't make any sense.
I have a lot of inquiry minds on the committee, so.
I farted to the YouTube video.
To the YouTube video?
Or whatever it is.
Oh, yeah, fair enough.
No, it it's just, I mean, I mean, I'm sure all of you have shared the same situation, I was like, if you don't have an answer to a question on something that's being. Everyone gets a negative thing, so let's try to chop it.
Yeah, yeah.
Unless I have the information in advance, sometimes I do, sometimes I don't, I can't, I can't dip it in the mud, so to speak.
Yeah. But yeah, we're gonna be lucky to get scrap metal weight on that backhoe.
Scrap metal ain't cheap. And it's gonna get worth, with the barrels going in, it's gonna get full volume.
Gotta be worth something, I mean, maybe the engine's worth something.
They are.
It's a little whileish, or lower. Okay, does that help with the warrants?
Uh, that does help with the warrants, I think that um, so uh for the, for the, for the board action. Do we want to make the, make the changes that I uh, that I suggested in order to get the fuel system back on? Especially in light of the uh email we just, that Brad just shared saying that Gary felt that that was the priority.
Yeah.
And then we talked, and my thought is, we can talk about it next week.
It sounds like they think, they think we have a problem and it's worth forty, so, and I guess the, the challenge I have with it is I don't think our entire. Fuel budget in a year is forty thousand. So, I mean, we can talk about department accountability all we want to.
Right.
It is.
But but unless.
Fifty-five thousand dollars is what we budget for fuel.
Okay, okay, well, it's gone, it's gone up then, but but I, I guess my point is.
I see your.
Right, even, so, so unless we think something like ten, ten percent of our fuel is disappearing for, for non-town purposes.
Yeah.
Right, which is, and and if, if we think we have a shrinkage.
Cameras gone down there, we'll be able to see.
Yeah, it it might be that, that the cameras would be adequate versus the, the other, but I mean, that's, that's my only point.
No, I, I'm saying, and that, and that's why I suggested that we put it on for now and then we bring Gary and Pete in next week to understand this in more detail to make that final decision.
No problem putting it on there, I I don't even have a problem if we have to get it to press sooner rather than later recommending it. And then potentially just be warned that I may speak against it, I'll warn you, unlike other historic select board members, that. I may wind up voting for it tonight and speaking against it on the town hall floor.
My, my expectation, my hope is that we would have that all settled out ahead of the printing of the warrant book.
Yeah.
And that, but if new information comes after the warrants printed, you do what you need to do.
But but if, but if we wanna, if we wanna put it on there, but yeah, at fifty-five thousand dollars worth of fuel a year and a forty thousand dollar system to keep track. It doesn't make a whole heck of a lot of sense to me.
Yes, my, my understanding is that it's, it's a complete fuel system. And and I think my understa, well, we'll, we'll let Gary and Pete talk to it.
Yep, absolutely.
I think there is some value, is there forty thousand dollars worth of value, I don't know, is the, do they, is it gonna come in, are they budgeting forty thousand dollars because they wanna make sure they have enough? Or is it budgeting forty thousand dollars because it's a thirty-eight thousand dollar project and they need, and they're asking for as little extra as possible?
Yeah.
All things they can tell us in a week.
Yep.
Alright, so I'll take a motion.
Uh.
I'll, I'll take, I'll take a motion to um restore the uh Highway's request for fuel system to the warrant and to adjust the tree work. Um warrant article to a fifty thousand dollar free cash ask in order um.
You have that motion.
Certainly.
Alright, thank you, any further discussion or have we beat this one to death? Alright, seeing as there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Looks like a scene from The Walking Dead after that discussion, so.
Alright, so Karen, you're gonna have to find the text of that article from an earlier version and put it back in.
Yeah, I'll put it back in, yeah.
Thank you. And other than that, I think that, I think that. The, the gaps between advisory and the select board are known, they're respected, and I don't know that we need any further information. Just, I don't think we need any further discussion on this, Jeff?
On the warrants, no.
On the warrants?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent, alright, so that means that uh we, so logically. The warrant needs to go to the lawyer, the sooner the better, do we need to, Beth, you have more experience with this than me, so I will um. Ask for your thoughts on the matter, do we need to, what do we need to do, do, are we ready to send it to the lawyers? Or do we need to review this any further?
Let's just do one quick run through on the warrant.
Okay.
Before we send it over to him, so.
Alright, can I, may, may I, may I ask, it's like, if it's, if we're not going to be looking at the money articles, can we shift to the budget first and come back to this? Just so that we're not doing it when Jeff and Sarah's sitting around?
Absolutely, in fact, what I can do is, if you don't mind me multitasking a little, I will read through it while we're doing budget stuff. Pop my head up like a gopher when it's something I care about and then.
I'm good with that, I'm, I was gonna say, I've been, I, I, I have been steeping myself in, in the operating budget. And so, alright, so. Um I'm thinking that the best way to approach this is um on an exception basis. And just, we say, because I know that, Sarah, you shared your numbers with me.
Yes.
I put them in my spreadsheet, um I will say that the select board, the select board has not made its recommendations yet. So, Beth, can I get your attention for a moment? Is that, um what I have done is we have the requested amounts. Um the departments have requested salary increases.
All over the board.
All over the board, and what I have done is I have prepared a set of numbers with a four percent cola for all the departments.
Really?
Yes.
And we can do that?
Um, we, we can recommend that, yes.
No, but I'm saying it works at four percent?
Um, well, we could, well, we'll, we'll need to talk about it, but it's like, but my thought is for the discussion.
We need to look at the math, but.
Yes, but, uh, I, I, yeah, but, but it does, it does, it, I, I, it works in my math and hopefully it works in reality, and so actually we should talk about that first. But the intention is to use that as the starting point for our discussion and then. From there, discuss appearances with them, but I wanna, but I wanna make sure that, that, cause we, the board has to, has stated a target of four percent. And so that's why I picked four percent to go, because that was our stated target. Um, I will need to scrub the numbers again, so I may reserve, like next week we may come back and say, yeah, we gotta revisit a couple of numbers. Um due to math errors or I missed something, but I think we're gonna be pretty close on most of them. And from there, we can, uh, the advisory has, is recommending a three point two percent cola, and so we, there will be a gap between our recommended numbers. Due to that, but if that's the only gap we have, then we're pretty close to being in alignment. And I think we're aligned in spirit, if not in magnitude.
Okay, so they're saying three, five, and we're saying four?
They're saying three, two.
Three point two.
We're saying cola, which, again, I think it was three point two four, but we said three point two.
Right.
And then you guys.
And we're go, and we were going for because of the fact that the year that cola was eight point nine percent, we, we did, we did like three and a half, so this starts to catch them up.
Yeah, this is, that, that was our rationale.
So, so, again, if I might, can I make one small editorial comment just for the other two, or no?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, yeah, Jeff, you wanna set the stage before we dig into the big picture, go ahead.
Yes, so, the reason why we're a little bit uh very cleft, or whatever the word is, is because the. Two years running and the town, the previous town, whatever, Kelly. Do, did not disregard direct instructions for the department heads not to put in their percentage increase, just put it down at the bottom with whatever it is. If it's six or seven percent, fine, but don't mess with the numbers, so each department came in with a different set of numbers. She said basically just put in whatever you think you should get, so I don't, I don't disagree with that, but from a logistics, Excel, whatever financial standpoint. It makes everything crazy, so what's happened, and then she locked the spreadsheet, only gave us one column, so. What we've had to do since her departure is for Sarah to recreate Kelly's template, taking the twenty-four numbers. All of the department worksheets that we have and then taking out whatever was put in and then putting in our three point two percent. And that's when I talked to you, Beth, two weeks ago and said, this is gonna be whatever, and then between the two of you, Tom decided to go ahead and do it.
Yeah.
We, we're trying to reconcile everything, there's been a lot of um formulate goofs and other things which. We've caught some of them, we've caught most of them, I hope, so we shouldn't be that far off, I think we might be forty or fifty thousand dollars off. From what, you with your four percent and us with our three point two. And the only major debate or whatever was, you know, where is the levy limit, we basically got that number for Lori after we asked Lori. For revision of what Kelly had given us, and basically. Uh, we, we decided that legal services, legal fees should be held constant. Uh, if there were any overages, we get the reserve fund next year, we think we're so close to the levy limit, we're within, less than a hundred thousand. Could be even thirty or twenty, but we don't know exactly yet, so that's why we made that one change to what the departments. What we recommend, that one change to the department's budgets aside from the cola, that basically was, was the only thing that we're, I think, in indifference with that.
Okay, so it was basically the legal fees and, and the cola.
But.
Right, I mean, there's a couple of other ones that, that I mentioned to.
Yeah.
To Tom in passing, but again, we're, we're, I'm still not confident enough about all our formulas and everything else to say that there might not be some other issue. But I think we're, we're pretty close.
One thing we do need to check is the highway super pay, cause I think that the original budget was gonna be a little lower than what we voted.
Correct.
Yeah, I think so, and that's, and we, and we can adjust that, and then, but I, I will co-sign the advisory committee's frustration on. Being provided numbers that don't include a non-colour number, I am, I have no problem with the departments saying what they would like for cola. But from a budget management standpoint and just be, making it easy to say, if we did this cola, what would it look like for everyone? Having all the departments say, if we didn't get any cola, this is what we'd ask for, it's like, we'd need, and this would reflect additional hours. And or any merit increases they feel that people need, it's like, go ahead and put that in, in your increase, but don't, but then give me the cola on top of that as a separate number. Cause then I can take that, we can take that non-colour number and gain and do the scenarios for, well, what would it look like if we did a three percent cola? What about five, what about twelve, things like that, and it just, cause otherwise, if they only give us a number with cola baked in, we have to figure out what it is and back it up.
Originally, and, and apparently we didn't enforce it, but originally. What was sent down to the department heads, that it sounds like they failed to comply with, was they were supposed to build bottom-up pay budgets. That included their prior year adjustments that were performance or, or change in hours based. And their cola all split out separately.
Mm-hmm.
So it sounds like that did not occur.
No, it's, it sounds like it didn't, I didn't.
So it wasn't supposed to go on the spreadsheet, they were supposed to submit separate pay sheets, we can go back and go over the minutes.
They, they did something like that in an initial pass, but then when Kelly's template came in, plus with the department sheets. They put in their.
Something different than what they put on that sheet.
Into the, into the, the final numbers.
Alright.
So we had to deconstruct, uh, and then that's where maybe there's some.
Confusing.
So we'll have to do it better next year.
I think we also have to worry about getting too razor thin, because if the police thing ends up going through and then we have to vote on that.
Police is um, it depends on the, um, I have a question, do you expect the?
I have heard nothing.
Okay, do you, do you expect that we will have, that we will exit arbitration before annual town meeting?
With the rate this is going, no.
Okay, then I have discussed the situation with Lori, Lori has said that, Lori has recommended that we budget fiscal year twenty-five. What we think reasonable and prudent, any shortfall, uh, when the contract is finalized. And we are, and it comes due paying the back wages for the contract, for contract year, fiscal year twenty-four. And as much as twenty-five has gone through, it's a wages account, we can deficit spend it, and if it's a big gap. We can call a special town meeting to adjust the budget, if it's not a big gap, we can use, uh, basically we can transfer money from other parts of the budget. And.
So it won't affect us getting to the.
It will, it will, it, it will not hit the levy limit, it, instead, it will reduce the free cash in, after we close fiscal year twenty-five.
So.
And so, I mean, we're going to have to pay it one way or the other, but this year it doesn't hit the tax rate, it's like, especially, and I don't want. The back pay for fiscal year twenty-four to hit this year's tax rate, so this makes perfect sense to me, now my thinking is, we should probably try and get. A seven or eight percent raise in. Now, my thinking is, we should probably try and get a seven or eight percent raise in there, or we can talk about it, but get, get the budget line for fiscal year twenty-five close to what we expected it was gonna cost, they are going to cost us this year, 'cause I wanna make sure that we're paying for it, that if we need to pay for it, it should be in the budget. But, the fiscal year twenty-four, we would probably pay that with free cash anyway, this is just a different way of getting it into free cash, and by impairing future free cash, without having to set aside current free cash for that, or just crunching the, having nothing left at the end of the year, because all the surplus accounts had to pay that wage, that wages deficit.
It just texted Lee to see if he heard anything, yeah?
Okay, so, that, so I talked to Lori about this, and that's what, that was, that was her recommendation, I had a different recommendation, she said, no, 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 do it this way. And I said, sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, so, so that gets it, so that's, so, but that does, that is, that does make it incumbent on us to, uh, to look at the wages number for the, uh, for the patrolman, and make sure we put in a good number for fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay, so, two, uh, two things, one, um, we did take your, uh, Beth's recommendation about the five percent on the forty.
For the lease?
Right, so that, that is in our numbers.
That'll get us at least, that'll get us at least in the ballpark.
Yeah, so if you, so I added five percent to their wages when we did it into COLA, just to get an idea of what their wages would be. I just had one question about one of the line items for the police, um, it says, police part-time and overtime. My only question was, would I be adding a five percent to that also?
Yes.
Okay.
Because, um.
And I did, I just wanted to make sure that was right.
Um, 'cause what it is, is that was a, um, that was for paying part-time officers and for the full-time officers overtime. Effectively, we no longer have part-time officers, but it's like, but we haven't changed the name, because it still gives flexibility, and since their base pay is going up by whatever amount, the overtime, if they want the same amount of overtime, we will need that five percent or ten percent or whatever percent more in the overtime account also, so you're right to increase it.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So, Lee just texted me, he said, um, what he heard is there's two towns ahead of us, but he doesn't think it's gonna be that much longer.
Okay.
So, so just again.
Middle of April, not that much longer, still might be.
At, at, at this phase, not much longer is June or July.
It is June or July.
I think it is frustrated as we are.
They asked for, I'm, I'm sorry, they requested arbitration, allow me to be clear on that one, they are the ones who requested arbitration. I thought we were close.
Yeah, Jen were close, too.
Just one other point, sorry for the, for the background, but, just, just to give you an idea, um, Lori's calculated levy limit was ten million, five seventy-four, nine eighteen. Our latest budget, which includes the legal expense decrease, or holding constant, was at, um, ten million, five four nine seven eight eight. So we're within like forty thousand, and Tom was still working on the numbers on, 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 for, for the original. So I think we're, so we're a little closer than I thought, but we're.
One, one clarification, that number Jeff gave is the operating budget consistent with not reaching the levy limit. Our levy limit is around six million, the operating budget is tax levy plus state aid plus local revenues, which, which adds up to that ten million dollars we listed, but the levy limit is distinct and is a part of that, it's about sixty, sixty-five percent.
Yeah, but really, I mean, what we're talking about is functionally, functionally, what we're talking about is what, what can we spend without requiring an override or an exclusion?
But you know, there's someone who's watching this, that's going to say they don't understand the budget if you don't make sure that we're aware of that.
Right.
And I wanna show off.
I was throwing, you know, a hundred thousand, I'm around, it's less than that, so, I just wanna clarify that as you're doing your work.
And so, just big picture-wise, with a four percent presumed COLA, which was our target, that has an operating budget of, uh, the current calculation is ten million, five hundred eleven thousand and less than five dollars.
And what was the levy?
Hold on.
Or a total available?
If we face it this year, we'll get it next year.
Well, I, I need to put this way, I mean, the person that taught me about, like, when I first went on the finance advisory committee, they, and granted, the budget was smaller then.
Mm-hmm.
But, back in the day, seventies, eighties, they targeted being within fifty thousand dollars of the levy.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so if we're, if we're sixty-five thousand away, granted, it's a bigger budget, so it's less average. I, I'm still not, I'm not freaked out about that, right, we're not over, we're technically within our means. Typically, the, the funds fall out better, 'cause we're always very conservative about our local receipts, and just like the, you know, and, and like many things, ten percent of our local receipts today, which is what we tend to, like, underestimate our local receipts at, right? We only estimate our local receipts at about ninety percent of what we're expecting to actually take in. Ninety percent today is a lot more than ninety percent thirty years ago, when people were do, using fifty thousand away from your, your spending limit. Let's call it spending limit instead of levy limit, because it's the levy plus all those other things. That's a healthy place to be, right, it means we're spending the money on the things we need to spend the money on, but we're not going outside of our means, we're not asking for an override, we're not asking for an exclusion.
Yes.
I, I was, I was very concerned six weeks ago when.
We thought it was over.
When we were a hundred thousand over.
Yeah, but fifty under is a good place to be, sixty-five thousand under is a good place to be, that's, that's kinda that sweet spot.
I overslept for a night over that, and then I recovered, so.
I, I, I knew somewhere, someone had done math wrong if we were a hundred K over, it just didn't make any sense.
Well, I mean, you, you have more years in this, uh, situation, but, uh.
Uh, let's see, one challenge is that. The numbers I received from Lori did not put a safety factor into local receipts.
They always have a safety factor in local receipts, she just didn't tell you, she's.
She put the nu, the number that's in there is the number that is in our tax recap, and they don't put the safety number in tax recap, they put the actual local, expected local receipts.
No, that's a projected, that's a projected number that's ninety percent of what they received a year prior.
You're right.
Sorry.
Bang the table, Beth, I know you wanna bang the table, okay, I, I will, uh, I think, think on consideration, I see your point, and I will defer to it.
Thank you.
So, it's like, I will, I will double-check offline, just to assuage my concern.
Double-check offline to assuage your concern, but there's not an accountant in this state that puts a hundred percent of their expected local receipts in that tax recap.
Yeah, great, thank you for, thank you for the reminder, that's what I need to see, so, so given that, uh, yes, Jeff?
Can I have two, two other questions, I'm not trying to direct the conversation, but I'm trying to get out of here to zero point two, so. On the publication of the warrant book, the advisory committee used to do it, Kelly took it over, is it going to stay with one of you individuals at some point? You, you have the printing information from Tom, now?
I have, um, I had contacted a printer, I, it did get some quotes.
Alright, so we're, we're okay, and we shouldn't have, have a problem this year?
Well, last year, I reached out to the printer and did it, and as you see, he did a little cop guide, so we're not gonna go follow it with that printer, but, yes, we're, this, this.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not gonna put that on the checklist for us this year, just.
Not printing, no.
So, a, as far as what I'd like to do with, with these numbers, Tuesday, we're gonna get together and continue to, whatever you scrub them, I guess is the word, because I would, I would like to be able to put, you know, one number in each one of these lines with Kelly's original spreadsheet, where it says advisory committee, okay, and, and then have you send it to, you know, whatever, so. I would like to know at some point, do we need an official group of the advisory committee to meet with you again, to go over any final resolution, or we'll determine that tonight, whether or not we need to have another meeting, is that basically what you're?
I would say that if, advisory controls the numbers that advisory recommends, and so therefore, if you are comfortable saying, these are our recommendations, and we, and if you wanna talk about them, that's fine, we don't see need to talk about them, then you send them over, and if we wanna talk to you about them, we'll ask, we'll set up a meeting. Conversely, if you're looking at your numbers and saying, we would like to talk to the select board before we make our final recommendations, then we'll set up a joint meeting, and we will talk, so it's, it's one of those, if either, my thought is, if either party wants to talk, we'll talk, but if you're good with the numbers, and we're good with the numbers, we can just roll the, put the numbers into the final form.
I'm trying to figure, when does it have to go, it goes to go two weeks before the town meeting, and then you wanna finalize things in the next two weeks, right? 'Cause that's why we had this meeting tonight.
The warrant book needs to be posted, or the, the warrant needs to be posted beforehand, I believe it doesn't have to be the book, but generally it is, and that has to be done two weeks before the town meeting, town meeting's on the sixth, and so that means it's the twenty, twenty-fifth, that means on or about the eighteenth of May, the book, the printing has to be done, and the book has to be, the book has to be put out in town hall.
It'll need about two weeks.
And I would say, and I would say, Karen, two we, if, we want the book locked down, um, two weeks before, we wanna target two weeks before it needs to be printed and distributed?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So I'm, I'm going to need when.
So that would be May fourth, which is, which is not the right day of the month.
I'm sorry?
So we're basically looking at April, you know, we go from April thirtieth, so if we, if there's some drastic change.
May ninth.
Are we going through any of these lineups?
May ninth, May ninth is two weeks before May twen, is four weeks before town meeting, so, I would say, it's like, you're, it's like, the numbers have to be finalized, which means if there's any discussion, the discussion has to be finished by that day. Not just sending the numbers over and saying, now we, now we discuss them. And that is, and that is a Thursday, it's out of cycle, and so, if we needed that day to, to lock things down, it's not the worst day of the week to do it.
Alright, but I mean, our, our objective will be to get everything scrubbed, and then we can send you over, you know, our recommendations, and then with the final, um, we have a vote on the warrant, we'll, we'll vote on those, and, and then send them over to everyone.
Yeah, make, make sure to include Karen, 'cause she's the one who's gonna be putting your information, and, yeah, and that is, uh, May ninth is three weeks from today. And so, the select board is scheduled to meet in open session two weeks from today, so if there's not a lot to discuss, we could aim to, to squeeze it in then. If there's a lot to discuss.
Three weeks, it's a little late.
No, no. The ninth.
So that, that's.
Is, is the, we need the budget closed, so that it can, so that the, so that the book can be finalized and sent to the printer and printed.
Right, but the select board meeting you're talking about is what day, I'm sorry?
May second, May second is our next open session, and so, if there's not a lot that needs to be talked about, we could squeeze it in then. If there's a lot to talk about, maybe we can squeeze it in, maybe we need another day.
Okay, so, so then my, sorry, there's sort of all these questions coming up, but, um, the next question is, last two years, we've had a, a presentation of the preliminary budget by the town administrator, does that, will you continue that tradition, or wait till next year to do it, or will you have a town administrator for a year?
You have anticipated my question, I am in favor of, of continuing the budget presentations to the town.
I'd like to agree, I don't know if I wanna, are you volunteering?
I am volunteering to do it, should I still be a member of the board, 'cause that is after my election day.
Right, and, and my, my only thought there is that, you know, we've been arguing, I mean, I'd say, we've been promoting that for, as long as I've been on the advisory committee, you know, just for transparency and just communication, everything else.
And, and, Tom, if you get, if you get voted off, I'll, 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 I'll back it up, if you want.
Okay.
Right, but, but, so, I think I, I tried to talk to Kelly last year, I said, well, you know, if six people show up, that's not really doing well, so we have to have, like, you know, Mike Siri, put a blast out, or use the cable station, or whatever, so we get more than six people, so that people understand what's.
I think we have money left, and I'd, I'd be interested to see what we have left in this select board budget, that we couldn't just do a postcard mail or whatever.
I was thinking a postcard, yeah.
Um, oh, just letting people know about it?
Just a bulk postcard, yeah, just a bulk postcard that says, you know, hey, budget meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, the advisory committee participated the last two years, we didn't, we didn't say anything, but, I mean, we were the majority of the people there. I think, you know, Mr. Holkrock was there, there was, um, I think, Kermit, and.
I don't think it was well enough advertised.
Bruce, uh, Bruce Clark, I think, was there, but there weren't that many people.
Yeah, but I think a postcard, you know, a bulk postcard to every household is pretty cheap.
Mm-hmm, okay, well, we can, I, I, I think that, um, it is, um, we can discuss that, we can discuss exactly how we wanna get the notification out at another time.
Sure.
Is that, um.
Right, I, I just raised the issue, because I'm just going through the thought process from what, how it occurred last year, and, so.
Because I was, I forget what I was doing, but I discovered several new chart types that are just like, ooh, sunburst.
Requested projector.
Sunburst charts, waterfall charts. And so, alright, so, big picture, just coming back to that. Fortunately, this is, Kelly's logic is not, Lori's logic is not like the way I expected, so.
When, you pissed off that, that formula problem and Kelly's.
So is there a reason why, even though I've requested year after year after year to not put sums unless they're required by law in articles, that we still have articles all over this warrant that have sums in the articles?
You mean in the, in the, in the actual motion article text?
In the actual article text, when it should be in the motion.
Um, no, but we can, we, let's, let's address that now.
Yeah, so, 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 and let me just give you an example, so.
So people don't get hung up on a number?
Yeah, well, well, that, where it ties your hands in something screwy, yeah, so, and let me just start from the beginning, and then go forward, and I know you wanted to talk about the operational budget, but, um, so. I, I mean, Article four is safe, the water department wants to put forty thousand dollars in their article, I don't wanna fight with them about it. Ambulance receipts, receipts transfers, I'd prefer a sum of money there, and just have the sum be in the motion, because I actually wanna talk to Donna about the fact, if we have, so first of all, Article seven, it says needs a sum certain, no it doesn't, just Article seven needs to be, will vote to transfer a sum of money from ambulance receipt reserve to cover the deficit for fiscal year twenty twenty-four wages account, or take any action there too, and then, we can use whatever sum we have at town meeting, so it makes no sense to be holding that text for a sum certain, when we can just put the generic language in there. I'd like to take the sum certens out of the other two ambulance articles, if Donna's okay with that, because if we have a wages deficit this year, I know they probably went over this information with advisory, even though it's like silly, because of the fact that they're self-funding, and they're doing it from their reserve receipt fund, so, it doesn't impact the tax rates, I don't know why you even fight over it, right? But let's just make sure with her that they don't have to have a second article for deficit spending next year, 'cause that doesn't make no sense.
Right, if they, if it looks like they're gonna need more money next year, 'cause of their issue with the, with the clawbacks.
Right.
Is that, that we fund it enough so that it just goes smoothly.
Right, exactly, so.
It's, it, and you're right, putting more money in doesn't affect the tax rate, it just takes more money out of the, the money that they earn for the service they provide to town.
Right, so, um, so those I noticed, um, Article thirteen, somebody put a note, borrowing only per the select board vote? No, the select board vote was, we're not gonna necessarily allocate free cash against it, okay? Um, it doesn't change the motion, what it changes, our recommendation for funding, which if the town decides not to listen to us, and make the, and we are gonna make the, we're gonna make the motion as a borrow, okay? Either the town votes it down, somebody can amend it on the floor, but we still, we don't have to, just because we voted where that funding was gonna come from, doesn't mean that we put borrowing only, okay?
That, that was just a, basically, a note.
Okay.
But, obviously, it wasn't gonna go on the.
Right, well, it's not, it's not necessarily obvious, 'cause when I see that language, and then I see that note, what my assumption is, is someone intends on changing the language in the warrant article to be borrowed, and I, I, I think that that is not advisable for us to do.
And I think we need to be careful of what we put into the, that, in the article text section versus in the notes section.
Right, so.
The article text section should be kept clean, to be clear what we're planning to motion.
There's all kinds of weird markups on here about using the three fiftieth money, but we haven't. There's all kinds of weird markups on here about using the three fiftieth money, but we haven't talked, I don't, I haven't seen what the balance is that's left, or is it on the expenditure report?
It hasn't been closed out either, and I got to talk to Shelby, she's got checks that came in and stuff like that.
Yeah, so, so, and, and, and this stuff is all over the place right now, so.
And that should just be, that should, that should be left blank for now.
Well, first of all, yeah, and, and it's, and it's on here in like a bunch of weird ways, and I don't know, did Kelly put this on?
Yes.
Okay, so she was probably.
Her initials, yeah.
Well, right, but Article thirty-three, I don't see any initials on it, I don't know if we put it in, um, so.
I don't know, I didn't get that.
Yeah, so Article thirty-three.
The only thing I changed was with the, with the highlighting is, and I numbered them.
Okay.
Everything else came from Kelly.
Okay, so, it, it looks like we've got a, like a bunch of, and it looks like we've got a bunch of them relative to that, that have all kinds of weird, like, exact values in there.
Is that when they're consolidating money from, from various articles to the fire station repair?
Well, that one, that one's, the way it's phrased is actually, that's the only one I don't object to, because it was, uh, you know, it's, it, those, those balances, it's appropriate to have those balances in, because it's specifically a transfer.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And we've got balances on that, so that one, I, I didn't take any umbrage to, it was just, um, um, the, uh, stuff like, uh, where was it? There was a couple in here that was, it's Article thirty-three, and it's like blank, it just says, be allocated to another project, and it had no very exact number, so.
Yeah, I think that's intended to, from what I remember, that discussion was that we had the money left over, and the idea was that we would identify a worthy local cause to donate that money to, because I don't think we can, I, I think, my recollection is, and this is a little vague, is that we couldn't sweep it into there, um, well, these are donations, so we can't sweep them into the town accounts. And so I think the recommendation was, we're done with three fiftieth, we have this leftover money that was donated, let's give it to a food pantry, or this group, or that.
Okay, so, okay, so that's donated funds, all right.
And so, I think the amount, that specific amount there is appropriate, because we're dealing, we're dealing with a specific amount.
Oh.
In Article thirty-three, we, but for that, we need to, we would need to identify a, a recipient for the money that we consider appropriate. Or some other use.
Why wouldn't we do something like the cemetery perpetuity fund, or something like that? Something that's, or, or those funds could go to the maintenance of the previously donated signs to the town.
I, I had talked to Jean, and this is a while back, about having it go to like, because it is a charity, the town hall, um.
The three fiftieth committee was a charity?
No, the, um.
Friends of the Brookfield Town Hall?
Yes.
Okay.
Because they can use, that money can be used for any improvements to the town hall.
All right, or we get to give it to friends of the library, given how much money they've invested in.
Yeah.
Eighteen Common Street.
Yeah, I, I, I think either one of those two uses is.
Or split it between the two of them.
Yeah.
Because they're both, you know, kind of partners in making the town better.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think their use, those uses of the money would be in spirit of, of people who donated three fiftieth.
Is the Friends of the Library qualified five oh one C three? I don't believe so.
They may be, I don't.
They are a private group, and if they're fundraising, I would suspect they are, but we, we should verify.
I think there was questions about that.
Okay, let's add.
Whereas I know the, the town hall one is legit.
Yeah, I know, yeah, I know he did all the paperwork, so. Okay. So instead of allocated to a project, I think that the verbiage in that article needs to be donated to, um, uh, you know.
I think specific donation targets.
Yeah.
Is, is that, and we, and we can discuss that now, we can discuss that.
Well, and that's the three, is that from the three fiftieth committee?
Three fif- um, uh, Fund one fifty-two, three fiftieth donations.
So I could talk to that committee and see if they want to have any recommendation where it goes, or does that matter or not?
It, you know, we're certainly open to their recommendation, um, and, uh, yeah, so, but, yeah.
For, for Article thirty-four,
Uh-huh.
that's leftover warrant article money, I think that should be swept into free cash or allocated to another article.
Well, my thought would be, how, how much was the key card thing that we took off for the town hall?
We didn't have an amount for it. That was one of the reasons we took it off, was because we were too late. The, I, I talked to Bill Simpson, Jr., and he did, he has started looking into it. I don't know if anything will come along in time for us to include it in the project, in, in, sorry, included in the warrant for this year's town meeting. It'd be nice to get it in, I just don't see us being in position to push it over the line.
Okay.
Oh, so there's a difference between these two?
Yeah, there is, there are two separate things. One is the town meeting vote, and the other one is, uh, the donated funds.
Right, correct.
Yeah.
But, to my, to my mind, Article thirty-four is sixteen thousand dollars that we can
Yeah, and that was.
put to use, whether that's rolling over to next year's free cash, or funding something this.
I wouldn't put it into free cash, I would, I would either reallocate it either into OPEB? Or.
Uh, there might be rules on that, because I remember.
That's, that's, that's a warrant, that's warrant article money, that's, that's money that was allocated to taxpayers.
The donated money, the donated money definitely has rules on it. And we probably should check, but I don't believe that the, the town, the ATM vote money would have any limitations on it.
Okay.
I don't think.
Mm-hmm.
But it's probably worth checking with Lori.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that one we can just reallocate. But it's too much money to just sweep.
Right.
I think there are rules about how much you can kind of just sweep and roll over to free cash. I think that, from, from warrant articles.
Well, too much, to my mind, if the warrant article served its purpose, then it makes sense to dissolve it, and if you don't have.
Well, the accountant obviously wanted us to vote it, because it was sponsored by the accountant.
Could be writ, maybe she's, maybe she entertains reallocating to free cash. I think she just, I think because it's enough money, she wants us to affirmatively close the account?
No, I think it's because she wanted to defray the strain on free cash.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
So I think what she was saying, recommending is we should use it for something like, and honestly, I think that, that fundamentally, um, right, that would cover like the fire thermal imaging device, and the flowers.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, or, let's see, three thousand and twelve thousand. So we could do the thermal imaging device and the gravel for private roads.
Yeah, no one has expended, the gravel for private roads has not been expended. We haven't spent any of that money. So, my inclination is, why put more money in if we, if we haven't used it?
Well, I think we go back to the dollar, because we still have the, the.
Yeah, I, I did talk to Gary about that, and he said, totally, I think he said to leave it in there, because they need to use it.
Yeah.
They still need to do it.
They still need to do the work.
Okay, but no one's come to, but, there's no work to do, because the use of that money required an affirmative vote by the select board to authorize the use of those resources. And no one's come to us asking us to use that money. So there's, there should, there should not be any of that.
I'd have to talk to him again, I think he was kind of putting it off until the next superintendent came in to.
What, to forward the request to us?
Right.
Okay.
Because they don't have the bandwidth to do it right now.
Then, then, then let's, um, okay, let's leave it on there for now, we can always take it off, or, it's, it's easier to get rid of it later and pass it over or something.
Yeah, well, that, well, that's, that, so I guess my question is, I, I don't understand unless, and this is a question for Lori, and since you're mostly driving the budget in the warrant articles, maybe you want to have the conversation with her, because I don't want to confuse stuff that's going on between you and. But, why do we have that as a separate article, when if we have an amount that's in our three fiftieth celebration warrant article leftovers? We would use the verbiage of transfer, you know, a some, tran- you know, raise appropriate transfer or borrow, and then just do the motions to move it from the three fiftieth account to whatever articles we want to apply it to. That's, that's typically how you would handle that, unless because it's three fiftieth anniversary money, we have to handle it differently, even though it was a town meeting vote.
We can check, I, I think maybe, uh, reallocated to is more of a placeholder, and then once we said things, then she would say, okay, you want to, yeah, that's, you want to reallocate that to other warrant, to other warrant articles you're looking to fund? Yeah, that's fine, but until we actually said, this is what we want to do with it, she might have left that there, but let's find out.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is that I don't think that should be on there as a separate article, I think we just need to know the number, and then decide which articles to do as a transfer.
So, so instead of pushing the money out of that, we, in the other warrant articles, we say to be funded by a transfer from this other warrant article account.
Instead of free cash?
Yes, okay, I.
Yeah, and then, and then what that does is it just leaves your residual free cash higher, which can either roll to next year's free cash, or we could add an article at the end to put, you know, if, if we think we're going to have enough to bother, put it in stabilization.
Mm-hmm.
So, one or the other.
Yeah, that's, okay, I mean, this is sixteen thousand dollars, so the most it's going to give us afterwards is close to twenty thousand.
Close to twenty thousand, yeah.
Which, to my mind, I think that's more of just roll it over.
It probably is.
At, at that level, fifty thousand, I think, I'd start to think about stabilization, because our stabilization accounts are in good shape at the moment.
Yep.
All right.
So is our bill of coming on?
So we need to check with Lori, the action there is, check with Lori, and determine whether it's appropriate to even have that article as an article, or really do we just need a number? And then to make a determination about which other articles we're going to do as transfers from that account, rather than as, um, transfers from free cash.
But fundamentally, Beth, it's, one of two things is going to happen. Either the money in this account is not sufficient to what we want to do, or we want to fully deplete this account, in which case, one of our other warrant articles is going to have to be, to be funded with X dollars from the three fiftieth warrant article account, and another amount to free cash, like, it's a five thousand dollar article, we might pull two thousand from the left, from three fifty.
But honestly, I, honestly, if it was my choice, I would take the sixteen thousand dollars and throw it into the fleet repair replacement account, that we haven't funded in a couple of years, so that if we have something come up on one of our ancient pieces of equipment, that we would be able to do something with it.
Yep, and fleet repair and replacement is sitting at thirty-eight thousand dollars, and it shows no expenditure since we appropriated the money in June of twenty-one. Which doesn't mean that we can't put money in, we could even, we could even put the money in towards, uh, to defray the cost of acquiring the backup.
Correct.
And then that reduces.
I mean, I mean, that's one of the things that we could do, is to.
Why didn't they use that when they were doing the repairs on the truck?
Which one?
The, the big truck.
Uh-huh. I could have sworn we've signed, I, I could have sworn we've authorized a couple of repairs out of there that aren't showing, but maybe, maybe my, my brain is.
Maybe they didn't know to get it out of there.
It's a warrant article, so therefore if they had spent this money in December of twenty-one, it would show as debited against that account, warrant article.
Right.
And this doesn't, the warrant articles don't just show this year's expenditures.
Yeah.
It shows the duration since the creation of the account.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I've got, I've got a note to check with Lori on that. And under, and I will talk to her, I'll give her a couple scenarios and say, what, it's like, we're not sure how we want to do it, if we want to do it this way, how does that work?
Yep.
And my thought is, fully allocate this to something else, eh, or allocate, yeah, how do we use this to fully fund some articles, how do we partly fund articles? And it's just a question of where it's going.
Yeah, and again, thirty-eight and thirty-nine, even though I know we're going to do the fifty and seventy-five, I just prefer to get the number out of there.
I, I'm behind that. And then we've got the, we do have the citizens' petitions. I think we've generally not taken a position on those, and we have no say as to whether they go on the warrant, so we just make sure they get put in there.
Yeah.
Just going on.
So I don't see the Arbor Day, um, article that we said we were going to put on here.
I, I don't think we had, I thought we, we signed an Arbor Day proclamation.
No, we also need an article where we adopt the Mass General law.
Oh, that's right, thank you. All right, so, so we'll need to add that in.
Yeah, so that needs to go on there.
And I will take a motion to extend the meeting, as we are.
Oh, yeah, I'll make, yeah, I'll make a motion to extend the meeting with regret.
Suckers.
All right, all in favor of extending the meeting without much enthusiasm, please say aye.
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 All right, so, from a, while Beth works on that, I'm going to shift over to the, uh, to what I call the big picture, which is where we stand in relation to the levy limit.
Okay.
Where is that?
Other than that, I think I've covered pretty much everything, I can hand my notes over to Karen, and she can always ask me what my chicken scratch actually means.
Mm-hmm, all right, so.
I do just have one question about.
Yes, Sarah.
At the last select board's meeting, I believe, maybe it was two ago, there was a question about adding somebody else to the last article. Is, did we find this out? Because I don't want to say his name, but he's on the last art, on the very last article, and there was a question, I thought, of somebody else.
Oh, yeah, whether, um, I think it's Bill Smith?
Bill Smith, yeah, so, did we find this out, is he getting added, is?
I forgot to ask the chief.
Okay.
I meant to, let me text him while I'm thinking of it.
Thank you, Sarah.
Mm-hmm.
And so, uh, at the moment, based on our projected revenue and an operating budget of ten million, five hundred eleven thousand and five dollars, um, rounded to the nearest dollar, um, we're looking at sixty-three thousand, uh, uh, that would bring us in below the levy limit by six, almost sixty-four thousand dollars. Which is not as close as I would like, and I, I was, did not have the time to look at how much the levy is going up, but.
So I don't know for, are we going to go through the line items at all, or?
Uh, we will be going through the line items, um, more on a, does anyone, do we need to talk about this, do we need to talk about this? But we will have a chance to talk about all the line items. Um, I will say that the, the budget that we have proposed is, where did that, um? All right, I spent a good chunk of day working on some, oh, there it is, it got moved, there we go. The, this year's operating budget is four, uh, the budget with the four percent COLA brings us in, it, uh, is an increase of four hundred seventy-three dollars, four hundred, four hundred seventy-three thousand, four hundred forty-five dollars over the previous year. Which is a, which is a significant increase, and it's going to be, uh, there's, it's going to increase the levy. Um, of that increase, um, sixty-two percent of that increase, if my math is right, is due to the elementary school. They have, um, we've talked to the elementary school, and they have a, uh, they've had a significant increase in special education expenses that they are required by law, so it's not like they're hiring more teachers, it's not like they're getting fancy new equipment, um, with the taxpayer money. It's, they have students who need services, and they need to do this.
Okay.
So it's, um, I'm sure it's going to come up, and I am disinclined to balance, the balance, to, to severely impair the rest of the town in order to mitigate the impact of the, increase of the school budget on the tax bills. I don't, I, we can do, the, the town can do that on the floor, but.
Yeah, I don't think we should be, be punishing the people at this end of Central Street for what's going on at the other end of Central Street.
Which is another, yes, that's, that's a very succinct way of saying what I was trying to say. And so, it's like, and, and, and so we, we can present it to the town, and they can make their decision.
And I think that's part of the public presentation, and then I think we need to have a shortened version of the public presentation at the beginning of town meeting, and let people know where the changes are coming from, and help them understand that that's what's driving it, so they don't start fighting over pennies.
Right, is that, yeah, that's, I agree, there are three big increases in the budget, um, the select. Um, the Selectman General Government is thirteen percent of the increase, um, Assessments is thirteen percent of the increase, and Schools is sixty-three percent of the increase.
And, and it's, and it's, and most of the stuff in our budget that's an increase is relative to the website services and technology.
And that's what I wanted to talk about.
I was gonna say, technology and legal are the two biggest increases. And then the, the Select, the Select Board goes up. I think a lot of that is salary, is the COLA, cause the Select Board is going up four percent. And I think a lot of the Select Board is salary for the people that work in the Town Hall. And then Treasurer, then a lot of the Treasurer, Assessor, they, their costs are.
I think we should just piss everybody off and give ourselves a hundred percent, uh, pay increase.
Well, I don't know, the, the, the recommended numbers I got from Sarah had our Selectmen's salary at ten dollars. It's like, ah, they must not like us. It's, but I, but I, I talked to the advisory, and they said that was a clerical error, and so we, we sorted that out.
I was, I'm saying we weren't worth what Nick was, but that was.
I was taking, I was wondering if that's what they were trying to tell us.
Oh, just, just one other point. I have to leave shortly, so.
Yeah.
I know I had some discussion with, with you individually, but we did give serious consideration to recommending that the Treasurer go from full-time to a part-time and dropping the salary to fifty thousand, so, um, that was all one of our cost-saving ideas. I know, you, you would mention that was difficult for coverage, but I just wanted to throw that out there, because that's probably gonna be another thirty thousand in savings in addition to the legal fees that we chomped. And so that's basically the fifty thousand, uh, we felt was more or less only we, we would, we would have. But we, we declined doing that, but we would certainly, um, I had, I had to sort of rein people in, because they wanted to do that regardless. I said, well, no, the Selectmen have changed their position, so we can't do that, but, um, that was a natural progression, just given my experience with seeing how well the Treasury Department is running now, and the fact that we could probably do less than forty thousand, so we. That was my last strategic comment. The, the line items, um, we have particular ones, I, um, go ahead, but I decided I do have to leave shortly.
No, I've, um, I have had some discussions also, and, uh, that was a matter I was intending to, to have the board discuss in the, uh, and I thought we could do it in the context here, since we are talking the budget, we can talk about staffing and force structure in the, in the context of how do we wanna, what do we wanna do next year, and therefore, cause that's gonna drive the budget. The, uh, leveraging Jeff's, uh, or building on what Jeff said is the, um, one of the ideas that, that, that I've had, I've had discussions about is a part-time Treasurer, and to also have an Assistant Treasurer slash Treasurer Clerk. The advantage being that, in addition to a more cost-effective structure, we now have two people capable of running things here, and if some, one of those people were to leave, we would still have someone here to be able to, to handle payroll and keep things going, so we're not, ah, we got a big payroll! Cause I think we all know what that felt like a couple weeks ago. And, and so that, and so that's something that, that is of interest to me. And I don't know if that's appealing to the rest of the board, and if that's something that we want to, I, I'm not sure tonight's the right night for it, just cause we got enough other stuff on our plate, but if we wanted to discuss it later and then revisit the budget based on that, or if we wanted to put the budget through like this, and then restructure and reallocate the budget after the New Year's, just because of time, cause it's like, we, we gotta get the budget ready and present it, and if we can't figure out what our plan is, I don't think that should, I don't think that should tie our hands from doing something you think is good for the town.
Can we talk to Sharon about how long she could actually service both communities yet, or is it too soon for her to be able to tell?
Too soon. She sent an email today where she's, uh, uh.
I would, I would think three or four weeks. Give, give her two pay cycles. Uh, the first one's gonna be getting used to things, second one, she'll have a good idea how she's settling in, and then see how she feels bandwidth-wise.
Do we have the position currently posted as full-time?
It's currently posted as full-time, yes.
So, we, we need to revise that posting to part-time, and we would also need to.
Well, no, cause, cause the hours could potentially be negoti-, we could have it out there as being full-time. Anything over twenty hours is benefited.
Mm-hmm.
Right? A reduction in, in the overall hours could be part of the discussion.
I mean, this is her first week, and she's at sixteen, but some of that's because she's learning.
Right, no, I understand that, but what I'm saying is that whether it's her or somebody else, it doesn't really matter. If it's posted as full-time, but we negotiate a part-time schedule with the individual taking the role,
Mm-hmm.
it doesn't invalidate the current posting.
Mm-hmm.
The only thing we're bound by, by state laws, that we can only post what's in our bylaws as positions. How many hours those positions are is really the Select Board purview, so.
Yeah, and I think when he's saying part-time, you're not suggesting less, right, yeah, not, right, exactly.
Twenty-four to thirty hours, not.
Right, I mean, I wouldn't change the, the dollar per hour or the calculated.
No, but I think like what Beth just said, you're suggesting maybe thirty hours or twenty-five, but not under nineteen.
No, no, no.
Right, right.
No, I'm, I'm just somewhere between that twenty and I'd say twenty, yeah.
Yeah.
Like for, it, it, yeah, like.
You may, maybe in certain weeks, it's, it's more hours because of whatever's going on, you know, an audit or something, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, in, in addition, um, talking, uh, as part of this discussion, the idea of implementing an employee self-service HR system, so that pay stubs are available online, um, onboarding paperwork, um, and, uh, things like that can all be done self-service. It would reduce the load on the Treasurer's office for personnel matters, especially the routine personnel matters.
Yeah.
Is that something that I was intending to, uh, bring to the board's discussion, um, after we got over the budget hump?
Okay.
But that's something that, um, I, I talked to Sharon and Lori, and they both, um, felt that it was a, uh, a worthwhile thing to explore.
Okay.
But she's gonna have to onboard Pete the old-fashioned guy.
Yep. All right.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, I'm sure Brad is, uh, mostly self-service.
Okay, self-service at a point of no service.
DIY.
Yeah, it feels more like DIY. And as a manager, you don't even know which of the four ticketing systems you need to put a ticket in when something's messed up. It's crazy.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and, but they, there is, they, they did say that there was a small cost, but that the operational savings in just the distribution of the pay stubs.
Oh, it would be huge.
And go, and going to direct deposit would more than offset the cost of this, and that there, and that everything else is generally bonus, especially with all the people down the street who are, you know, are person, responsible, we're responsible for personnel-wise, giving them to self-care.
Yeah, that would be great.
And it saves them a trip down here, makes their life easier.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I think it's, it's definitely something to, to put a, uh, put a little pinhole, uh, put a flag in, a future date to discuss.
Stick a pin in it.
Exactly.
I think it's the common realism that you're looking for.
Yes. All right, so, um, I would say, just looking at big picture, just give me a second to create a quick formula to look at the variance between the advisory recommendation and the Select Board with, um, the two-point-four percent COLA, so that I can, yeah, all right. So now, for this discussion, um, starting with, I'd like to start with General Government. Advisory's recommendation is nine sixty-nine point nine thousand, and, um, the Select Board, the, what the Select Board is looking at with a four percent COLA is nine ninety-three. So that is a two-point-five percent difference, with Select Board being higher. So, some of that is due, some of that is due to the difference in COLA recommendations, and then we also have, um, the advisory is, I'm sorry, advisory has recommended, uh, level funding legal, while right now, the, uh, the, the Select Board, the recommended budget for the Select Board had legal going up twenty thousand. Um, I will say that we are, I am talking to the lawyer more, now that Kelly is not available.
And I think if we.
And those bills are coming in, and so, and I know we, I don't know how much we've spent this year. I, I would say, if, if there's a big surplus, a lot of it is.
But of the three town, of the three town administrative candidates, none of them have a legal background, so.
So they would, they would not be in position.
They're also gonna be needing to use it.
Yeah, though a lot of them are gonna at least have a much better lay grasp of Mass General law, probably, well, just cause it's their full-time job, so.
Yeah, so my thought is, is that, it's like, yeah, we're, we're, it's sixty percent extended.
Is the link that Kelly sent out still a live link, or is it?
Yeah, that's what I'm on.
Okay.
And so I am, so, and at that point, I am not convinced about lowering that. I, I understand advisory's position that we do have, it's like, but I guess the issue is, the reserve fund is intended for unexpected expenses, and legal's not unexpected, so, um, it's, I'm, I'm not sure that that's something, and I will, I will make a, I'll make a note to ask Lori, cause I don't think the advise, the reserve fund is intended to backstop and underfund, an account that was underfunded. It was underfunded just because we didn't put enough money in, whereas if we could justify, something happened, like there was, like there was a lawsuit against the town, a lawsuit is unanticipated, and covering the deficit due to a lawsuit that we didn't anticipate, that could be done. But just for routine matters, I'm more leery that that would be flagged by Lori or the auditor.
I, I personally find it hard to believe that we could run up eighty thousand dollars a year in legal expenses just on routine town business. I mean, there's gotta be, I think, over the years, there's been like a couple of really fake nasty lawsuits that are in there.
Jeff? We have a lot of open meeting law, or, uh, not open meeting law, whatever the requests are.
Oh, a public record request.
Public record requests, and those are hurting.
Those require legal fees to, to.
Well, a lot of them require redactions by, by the legal counsel.
And that's.
Right now, we're getting crushed with them.
And, and the way that works is, if it's two twenty-five for KP to do those redactions, we only, the person only gets billed at twenty-five dollars an hour.
Yeah, there's a legally mandated.
So we're, we're soaking up two hundred dollars an hour for these.
We need to find a law for the, the redaction, and that stuff.
Well, Kelly was doing them, and now she's not.
Yeah. And so, yeah, and so, and, and Jeff, I'll tell you, there, there was a lot of things I would bounce off Kelly that, now that she's no longer available, it's like, I have to go to Michelle. Ding, 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 goes the.
And hopefully, a new town administrator.
People that are saying that the town administrator wasn't saving this money are just looking at Brad.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's.
So.
No, no, I, I, I totally agree that we need to, as long, as long overdue, to have a town administrator.
Mm-hmm. So, it's like, and we don't, we don't have to converge on it. I, I'm, I, I say that more to, to, to declare that is part of the variance between the advisory recommendation and what was, uh, recommended for the, uh, on behalf of the Select Board.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, it's not, it, we have not, the Select Board has not yet made a recommendation on the entire, on this part of the entire budget yet.
So for some reason, mine link is not the one, does yours have advisory's in there, or no?
Let me see, file, let me see where that is.
Yeah, could you send out the link to the?
No, you should be on the same one, huh, man?
Is there a way to get this to tell me where the document is?
Yeah, you go to File, and then.
No, he's on, he, he's on the same one. Are you seeing the advisory numbers in yours? No, you're not looking at the same one I am. I have advisory numbers in mine.
Yeah, so can you share that link out?
Yeah, I can. Oh, all right.
They haven't been updating the one that we adopted, that's the reason.
Well, I, I updated this one. Sarah gave me the numbers, and I copied and pasted them.
Yeah, he copied and pasted them, yeah. Cause I didn't have.
Yeah, we, I, I, this has been on.
Yeah, I created our own spreadsheet that way. We didn't mess with yours.
Well, as I said, we couldn't use ours, this was long, so, we do it.
The only thing is, we did not, something for you guys to talk about at a later date, we did not add COLA to the town clerk's salary because the person got the increase last.
Oh, that outrageous increase last year?
What?
The outrage, they got the outrageous increase last year?
Yeah, so we did not add COLA to his increase this year. We kept it.
You level funded him?
Yes, yep.
I can support that.
Yes, so we kept it at the fif, the fifty thousand that we got last year at the end of town meeting. We did not give him COLA.
Yep.
So we level funded him.
I, I have a COLA in for him by default. We can definitely visit that if that's what the board wants.
Yeah, just to, yeah, just to talk about that amongst yourselves.
Right, I mean, that is at your discretion, I think.
Yeah.
And there, there are two FY twenty-five budgets. Look at FY twenty-five budget, not FY twenty-five budget two. That was more my, set aside as my playground. Do you see the advisory numbers in there now, in the link I sent?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and we'll just have to make sure that the, there's one master copy that we have. We all know where it is, and we all treat it properly.
Yeah, I mean, the only two other differences was the, um, we had kept the town administrator number at whatever the, um, where was it? Whatever was in the announcement. Was it eighty-nine or the ninety-something, so.
Yeah, so they were.
That saved us a couple of thousand over the year for the town administrator.
The number I have for you is, uh, with a three-point-two percent COLA.
Yes, yes, so we, no, so we requested her, we level funded it, and then we gave her three-point-two percent.
Okay.
She requested ninety-three thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-three cents.
It's a, it's a small difference.
Yes, she.
Before, before, before COLA.
No, I, I think, I think that, I think she requested a three-point-seven percent COLA.
Okay, with COLA, okay, so I didn't know that, so I, I level funded it off of the twenty-four budget, and then gave her COLA.
Okay, you, 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 yeah, you, your, your recommendation is, uh, three-point-two percent COLA over fiscal year twenty-four. The initial request was three-point-seven, and then the budget I put in was a four percent COLA to be consistent with everyone else in town.
Yes.
So I think we're all looking to do the same thing, we're just all have different, we just have our difference, we, we, no, but we have our gap in what COLA we picked.
Yes, yes.
But we're doing the same thing, just with our, we have each of our own COLA numbers, which is, which I'm fine with. But that's what, that's one of the differences there.
Yes.
And, let's see, and.
But besides that, there was a major difference.
That must be Beth.
Yes.
Cause, cause Brad's not touching his computer, and I could see that going.
I don't wear a gun, GC.
What am I called?
Oh, Guest Contributor, that's interesting.
Oh, because you, you know what, oh, because, because you're editing through a link rather than through your ID.
Oh, God.
And so I, it's like, yeah, well, I'll probably shut that link down and share it with you explicitly later.
Okay.
Like I said, I, I just, I gotta get it through, but I, I needed a document that was useful for this, and then shareable is next on the list. So, and, but anyway, coming back to that, so there is a thirty, there's a twenty-four thousand dollar gap between our budgets. Twenty thousand of that is legal.
Yeah.
I think in the grand scheme of things, and, and I think most of the rest of this can be attributed to COLA, just saying, so. I, do you guys see any, do, do we need to really push on this?
No, the, the only other one, I just wanna men, mention to Brad and, and Beth before I leave, was that we had split the difference for the, the Fire Chief's salary or stipend, whatever he calls it, request. He had requested eighteen, I think, last year was, was it twelve or fourteen?
Yeah, twelve.
He was twelve last year.
And we had put him in at sixteen, I think, right?
Yes, yeah, we voted, we voted sixteen.
So that, that'll be a little bit off, and we were, we were, uh, we have to double-check the fire wages, because he asked for a, a big increase for all of his part-time people, because he said they were underfunded, but I don't recall what the number was.
Yeah, I have to talk to him, because he requested the sixty-six thousand five hundred, but the question I have for him was, does he want me to add COLA to that, or is he requesting that increase including COLA? Cause I know it's for, you know, the twenty part-timers, full-timers, whatever over there, so I just need to ask him that, if he requested the sixty-six thousand five hundred before COLA or after COLA. I couldn't remember.
I do not. I, we should talk to Chief Martel about that, cause his wages account was, uh, this year is fifty-eight, seven, ten.
Yes, yep.
And he has expended eighty-four percent of that, which, as a four-eleven, that's two and a half months. And he has expended eighty-four percent of that, which as a four eleven, that's two and a half months. So, he is on, he is on track to slightly overexpend that account. But, not by that, not by, I don't see the over expenditure being enough to warrant the big, big increase there. So I would like to understand better why, what, how he arrived at his new number.
Yes.
I thought he had told us it was a wage adjustment based off of market.
Yeah, and I thought it had something to do with like the number of incidences increased.
No, it doesn't have anything to do with the number of incidents.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last, he said it was.
I said it was, it was, it was just a market adjustment, like what other communities are paying their fire chiefs.
Well, he, he did that for his, I didn't see the numbers for, for these, these part, these part-time people, which is.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, did, did the, were the, were the part-time fire, were the general, were the volun, were the firefighters, were they adjusted when we did the Collins Center adjustment at fiscal year twenty-one or twenty-two?
It was not a Collins Center adjustment, we adjusted them to get them above minimum wage, when minimum wage changed.
Okay.
Yeah, so I just want some more information.
Okay, but it wasn't, but it wasn't, we didn't look at market, we just, okay.
But that was two, two or three years ago, I heard.
It was, it was fiscal year twenty-one or twenty-two because the, uh, I don't see the, I don't see the, uh, the mark to market adjustments we did in the history here. And these, this goes back to fiscal year twenty-three.
So if I notice wages flags that are missing, should I change, should I put it in there?
You can put them in there and it will, it will apply them, I think I left it out because it looked like we were not applying COLA to those, or I wasn't sure. But, yeah, we, definitely, let's discuss it, because it's like, I, I would have liked another day or two to, to, to get completely through this, but it was, um.
All I was trying to do verbally was sort of give you the, the key hype, hype points, so then you can go doodle it, because, um.
Yep. Yep.
We spent too many hours on this, which we didn't need to, which is what I said last year also with everything, so it's just, it's the same old story. We'll get on the same page next year.
And then I would, so, and then looking at police, I think we need about forty-three thousand, well, how much do we want, how much do we want to increase this? My thought is that everyone else, our proposal, the uplift from fiscal year twenty-three, if they were, um, getting the COLA that everyone else gets, would be seven percent.
I'm sorry?
Um, if the, the police wages, if they were not subject to collective bargaining agreement and they received the COLA that everyone else who works for the town gets. They would be, fiscal year twenty-five would be seven percent higher than fiscal year twenty-three. So to my mind, that's, that's the starting.
Seven percent higher?
Seven percent, they would have got a three percent bump in fiscal year twenty-four and a four percent bump in fiscal year twenty-five. So technically, it would have been a little more than seven because they'd have compounded, but I'm, I don't think it's that big a deal. Since it's a budget, since it's a budget number and what they get's gonna be based on the contract from arbitration, not on what we put in the budget.
True.
But I'm more saying.
What, we could do seven and a quarter, seven and a half, just to address the compounding?
We could. I mean, the, the question becomes, do we wanna, do, do we wanna do, it's like, just eight percent, just to get a little more in there and reduce the hit? I mean, I could, I could even.
You're gonna be doing a bunch of math somewhere.
I could see going to, I could see going to, I could see going up to ten, I, I don't, I couldn't see myself going past there. Just to make sure there's enough money in there, but.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, we're good. And then the police chief, he said that per his contract, he got a three point two percent increase, so just make sure that.
Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, his, 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 his salary is contracted, and so.
So that number should be in there.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, and so I think, it's like, we can double check, we can double check what he asked for versus his contract, but I think.
Yes.
I, it's like, and fundamentally, it's like, he's got a contract, I don't think, if we overfund the wage account, he's not gonna get the extra money.
No, he only asked per, well, so, he requested only what?
He requested his contract.
He requested his contract, yes, yeah, he didn't request anything over.
Yes. Yeah, and, no, I, I, and I, I believe he does, but it's always, it's, I, I trust him, but I like to verify also. And my point is, but if I don't verify and he asked for more than he was technically entitled to, I think he would only get what's in the contract.
Yeah, he would.
And, and therefore, it's not like overfunding the account would, would obligate us to pay him. So it's like, it's just, it would just be money we'd be taxing the citizens that we don't need to, which I would, I would prefer to avoid.
Yes.
But if we did tax it, we would get it, we, it would not go to the chief, which is my main concern.
So, because of that whole weirdness with the, um, uh, for the police, I'm gonna. And you can double check my, my math when I do this, I was gonna put another cell in there so that you, we can add three percent and then four percent to that line. Just strictly on the, on the police line to get a number.
Well, if you multiplied it, if you multiplied the fiscal year twenty-three number by one point oh three and then multiply that by one point oh four, you would effectively compound it in one step.
That's what I'm, yeah, it, it's actually easier because of the way you set up the formulas in the spreadsheet to go ahead and, and do it that way.
Mm-hmm.
By just adding a.
Yeah, just instead of, uh, just replace that one plus oh dollar sign two with whatever multiplier you want.
I think I need to multiply that whole thing by.
Yes. Will you do that?
Copy, yep.
Have a pizza or something.
Right.
I haven't eaten dinner yet. Everything's gonna be cold.
Last year was three and a half, three and a half, I don't know.
We'll beat it.
I don't know if it's necessary, necessarily to stay at the end, but I do have two of my grandchildren at my house with me. With my daughter staying with them till I get down, but she doesn't move, no.
Figure it out?
Yeah, except I didn't know, uh, I did, you're, one of your formulas depends on the J column, and I have no idea what's in there, so.
Um, the J column? Let me see, um. Oh, I can unhide that, but.
Uh, yeah, that's what I was gonna do.
Where is the, which formula relies on the J column?
The requested percent increase?
Oh, that is, um.
Well, and actually, the requested increase is zero, but the, the, uh, select board recommendation is different, nevermind.
You just have to unhide that, I, I think that was, that was, that was more of an informational field.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think anything's relying on, on that J column.
All right, I'm ready to. We've lost Jeff and the advisory board, we need to just reconvene on this, when does?
No, no, I think we have Sarah, we still have Sarah, yeah, so.
Oh, we do, we have Sarah, I'm sorry. Yeah, but we're, we're almost past my bedtime, so.
So, well, let's, let's see what we can do, so for, so for police, I think the select board is, um, your four one three six oh six is, um, what's in cell T two?
T two's got three percent.
Okay, so basically.
And then I added in like, I added in the compounding if I did my formula right, which roughly speaking, it looks like it's about right, I think. Maybe not.
Four one three, um, I concur with the number that you came up with.
You did.
Yeah, I just, I just, I, I did it in a more straightforward, less flexible manner.
Okay.
But it's like, but it, it valid, it validates, so I think we have a good number there for, um.
At least a planning number.
It's, it's like, yeah, it's like, I, I don't think it serves the town to level fund that account.
No.
Given that the contract will be finalized this year.
Yeah.
And so therefore, this, I think this is a, a good place to go.
Okay.
And so, all right, so I'm.
Do we need to do the same thing on the overtime, use those same, that same formula?
Yes, we, I would say you would just copy the formula from oh one oh four to oh one oh seven. I set it up so that the formulas could be copied and everything would work the same.
Yeah.
Although we might need to, actually, we should put, let me put a W in there because that is a wages.
Oh, I didn't like that. Maybe it did like that, yeah, okay, so that worked.
And I'll check. I got a slightly different number than you.
Well, I don't think my copy taste worked.
Okay, yeah, you're.
My copy taste did not work.
All right. Yeah, that looks like it's just a four percent uplift, would be my guess.
Yep, so let me just, yeah, it didn't work. Does that look right?
Uh, that is the exact number that I came up with.
Okay.
So we, and I used my, the same form, style formula I did last time, all right. So, and so, so I think that settles the police for what we wanna recommend.
Yep.
All right, and, uh, fire department, we have the, uh, we've got, there's the increase in fire wages and there's the chief's salary. I would, I would like information, if, if he is, if he is marking to market, I would like data to, to support that.
Okay. Ask him to come in May second.
Yes, and then the other, um, now, fire expenses, I was chatting with Kelly about that and find it. He said seventy-two, but she's, she was saying that she thought he was always over expended, I need to look at that. I was, um, I'm not seeing his expense report, he's seventy, uh, fire, you, fire expenses is seventy-two percent, which is under twenty-five percent. And we are just past three quarters of the way through the year, so he is on target to come in under, but not by much. I just don't know if he's sitting on a bunch of bills.
Right.
And so I think we need to. I think we need, I think we need to tell him that he, I think we need to, uh, suggest that if he does have bills, he needs to get them in. Because now is the time to get that budget done right, rather than what we've done a lot before this year, was have to make transfers around to cover the shortfall in that expense account. I know he got a big bump this year in fire expenses, so I would hope that he has enough. But. Don't know. All right, so we want information on wages, chief's salary, and we just wanted to confirm fire expenses, everything else, I think we're good, um. He has all, oh, you know what's gonna happen, I know what's gonna happen. His testing and recertification account and his fixed asset accounts are fully depleted.
Ah.
So now that they're depleted, he's not going to ask them to be topped up, he's gonna start paying for things that would normally be paid for, for those accounts by expenses. And he's gonna burn through expenses, that's what he's done every time I've looked into it.
Yeah.
And so therefore, it's like, he's, we need to, we need to look into it, we need to talk to, we need, when we have him in, we also need to talk to him about what would be the right level of funding for his accounts. Because I think chronically underfunding them does not serve the town's needs.
Agreed.
And so, I mean, I know we've been bumping it up, but it is what it is. All right, so, a lot of, so we got a lot to talk about fire, I, I would just leave fire, we'll talk about it that next time. Um, telephone contract. We're only half, we're half expended and we're three quarters of the way through the year. Karen, are we paying less for telephones now that we redid the phone system here?
Absolutely, yes, we're paying less, yes.
All right, well then, let's, let's, and.
Reflect that in the budget?
Yes, do we have good visibility and good certainty as to what our telephone expenses are going to be for the year?
Well, um.
There's still some question with some things.
That Kelly had that figure, she, she figured it out, and I think that's how she did the budget, so I don't know why.
Oh, oh, she, oh, okay, she, well, yeah, we had eight, we have eight thousand dollars this year and we have, she asked for seventy-two hundred, but.
She was provided all the phone bills because we didn't.
And, yeah, and we've, we've used, I mean, may, maybe they're late billing us and the, the expenditure only reflects the, um.
Well, we definitely stayed in money with the, with the town hall phones, that's for sure.
Okay, I mean, it's like, it's a, it's a, it's an eight hundred dollar reduction, there's not a lot of money to be had here, so I'm not gonna, I'm. We'll come back to this time available, but I don't, I don't think the amount of money here is worth us getting sidetracked.
Yeah, please.
All right, uh, and then, let's see, other, now we got the inspectors. We've got a, got a COLA for the, uh, for the lead inspector, um, next week, uh, in two weeks, we're gonna have to talk about the retiring inspector. We don't wanna let that slide too much, but not tonight. And, let's see. The EMA stipend is going up by seven hundred dollars. Let's talk to Pete about that, since he's the one to talk to, I don't know if he's marking to market or if there's more det, more duties landing on that position.
Associated. Yeah.
I, I just, it, it's going up, so I wanna understand, if, if it makes sense, it makes sense. And then, and then the gap between advisory and select board is twenty-six thousand dollars, but I think most of that. Is, twenty thousand of that is the adjustments we made to police. Because advisory's recommendation was based on level funding, because that's what was requested of them. And so my request to advisory is to, um, is to look at what we're recommending and consider supporting that, um, just based, and if you need more information, uh, let us know. But, I, I, I'd like to have advisory's concurrence on that.
All right. When you, when you have the, can you just let me know what you have for dollars?
Um, yeah. After, after this, I will send you a stat, I will send you a snapshot of our budget document.
Okay.
And then that way, you can look at it, and that will give you a chance to look at what we're looking at and get there, and if I can figure out a way, understand how we can share it with you in a way that you can touch what you need to touch and not touch what we don't want to touch.
Yes.
Then I will do that, because then you can update your advisory numbers whenever you see fit.
Okay, so.
Because that's what I would love it to be, is for you to just tell us what your numbers are by adding them into the spreadsheet.
Okay, so if you go to your managed protection, you can unlock certain cells, so you can highlight certain cells, I'll be able to just touch those.
Yeah, so throw them to you.
Yeah, and, and my thought is, I would, I would, yeah, I don't know what Kelly locked, my thought is, I would lock everything that we have numbers in and leave the stuff off to the right as, as scratch space.
Yes.
I don't know if she only unlocked that I, that advisory column.
Yeah, she did, so I had no like scratch space in the other one, so.
I'll give you a scratch space.
Yeah, so I was like, ah, I need like scratch space to work off.
Gotcha, all right, um, schools, I think, I think we understand schools and that at the moment, we're gonna, we're gonna let it ride and let the town, and. We're gonna, we're gonna let it ride and let the town, and. Let the town have its say.
Well, I I don't think we really. Fundamentally, we could go back to the school committee and ask them to shave.
Mm-hmm. When we, yeah, and.
Is, is, is that. And I don't, my assumption is what we got back was no, because it's special ed requirement.
That, I do know that the, the school budget, I I was talking, I talked to the s- the school board and. Deb Boyd and Dr. Hosterman um, about the budget, and. My understanding is that they, they have two positions that were funded by grant money, that they, the grant money is ending in fiscal year twenty-four.
It was basically like ARCA.
And they're, yeah, and they're, and they're look, and they, they were looking to continue them on. As uh, but carried on the budget from the uh, but not funded by grant anymore. And so, and I did, and when the revenue numbers didn't, when the revenue numbers didn't look as good because the, there was an error in there. I did give them a heads up that. We may need to come back to them, and they were, so they, they.
So, do they, did they have a reason for the. Like the change in the transportation costs?
New con- new contract this year.
New contract.
Twenty-five is a new e- three-year contract, so it's ju- it's jumping up.
Yeah, and why is advisory have it?
Advisory has it level funded, and it's like.
Oh, I didn't notice that, um.
Yeah, I didn't notice that either.
Alright, so. If you guys take care of that.
Was that intentional, or was that?
No, it was not intentional, so we, it's supposed to be fifty thousand three hundred twenty-five.
Yeah, is that a clerical error?
Yes, that's.
I see, I see, I see.
I made plenty of those there, so don't.
I see fifty thousand two nineteen.
Yeah, but.
Oh, are it fifty thousand two nineteen, you know?
Yeah, but, but Sarah, cause clerical error and advisory has asked for that, then I can update mine now, because I wanna reflect what advisory decided. Whereas if you say no, we approved the wrong number, I need to wait for you, but, I, so let me.
Yeah.
So let me update the number to reflect your uh, your will. There we go. And the same with expenses. The elementary school expenses, you um, the number I had from you was level funded from fiscal year twenty-four and did not reflect an increase.
Yes, but they're asking for three point eight seven five, correct?
Um.
Or no?
Yes.
Yes, three, three point eight.
Yeah, the nu- the number, the number I got from you with your recommended value was.
Yes, it was, yes, the fu- was the three point five seventy, yeah, and add the three, extra three hundred fifty thousand.
Alright, so there we go, so, okay, so I will update that number also.
Yes.
And so now, what I have for. And regional school assessment also, let me see. Your. You have the fiscal year twenty-four number for regional school assessment also, rather than the fiscal year twenty-five request, so it looks like.
What was the request, one point eight two three?
No, it's, I have one point seven eight nine five six six now.
Alright, what is it, one?
One.
Yep.
Seven nine eight.
Yep.
Five six six.
Thanks. Okay.
Alright, so. Nope, but that's the wrong cell.
Alright, I.
So there we go, so now advisory and uh, let's see. And my thought is, the select board is now good with um, the request from the school. A total of five point seven two seven one fifty-three.
Yes, yes, I have the same thing.
I just, I also just popped into the F one twenty-five presumed COLA, I just messed with your formula and did forty hours times twenty forty. For the highway superintendent salary, since that's what we voted.
Yep.
So now you've got a proper number in there, it made it pop up about two thousand dollars, from what you had.
Yeah, I got it. Okay. That pushes things up, but.
It does, but it is what it is, and we're getting a backup water superintendent for the same.
Yeah, that was, and that's, that wa- that was gonna cost us money.
And uh, I had a loose comment with Don Taft about that, I mean, should water put in for any of that?
I think that's one of those things that sorts itself.
I mean, it's net, it's net, net, no change, it's just.
It's, it's one of those, my thought is, is that.
Our water, our water isn't self-funded. So they, 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 they use the funds from the water department to pay for capital improvements to the water system.
Mm-hmm.
But we, the town, pay the water superintendent's salary.
Mm-hmm.
And none of the salaries come from the water monies.
Good to see.
So, um, if we were to move, if we were, no, if we were to move to a self-funding model similar to the ambulance. Then we would have to actually get charged by our own water department for access to our hydrants.
Mm-hmm.
And it turns into an accounting goat rodeo.
Interesting.
Yes, that's, I can see that, I thought, I I, I thought the water revenues went into the um, I thought they went into general revenues.
Uh, they do, well.
And so therefore, they, and that, there just wasn't enough revenue for them to be self-funding.
No, well, no, we, our, our water goes. I'm not sure, but there is, I don't think our water goes into general revenues, I think our water goes into water revenues. But our water department is not fully funded under whatever mass general law would make them a separate entity.
Uh, in ge- in local receipts, there's a hundred fifty-six thousand dollars charges for services, water.
Right, yeah.
So I think that's the water department revenue.
Right, but that's, that's why they, that, that's why I'm saying though, that they, that water department wouldn't necessarily fund it.
I mean, I, I think effectively, their.
Their receipts do go into a separate. Account, that's what we're pulling the capital improvement for the water funding out of.
Really? Cause, because we are, the, that hundred fifty-six thousand dollars is showing as general revenue, and therefore, it's, it's reducing the letter. It doesn't look like it's going into a special acc- that money's not going to special account. It may not be the water revenues, but.
Some portion, some portion of what they take in does.
I know that, I know there is a water capital account, I was not.
But we don't put, we, we never put money into it, well, I mean, we put money into it, but it's transferred out of, it's a transfer, it's not a.
I wonder, I wonder if that's a, if part of the revenues are sent to general fund and part of it's sent to capital.
It could be.
And it, that may be where it's, it's divided.
It's got some, the water surplus account.
Yes, that's what it's been called.
So some, some amount of what they take in goes to the water surplus account, I don't know what all the account is.
Yeah, and then, it's like, that's, and that's fine, but some, some of it does go to the general fund, which offsets the cost of the operating of the water department. Pays for their water superintendent, pays for some of their expenses.
Well, yeah, they, I mean, in, 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 in an indirect manner, yes.
Yes, yes, it's not.
But they are not self-funded.
They are not self-funded, and those, those water revenues are not. Encumbered against water department expenses, it's general revenue, and it helps pay for the water department part of the budget.
Correct.
Alright. So I would say, at this point, it's probably not a big enough deal to make it worthwhile, if it turns like, uh, if it turns out to be, we can revisit it next year. It's, it's just, it's one of those, I don't wanna spend all the effort and find out, yeah, it's about two thousand dollars a year.
Right.
Well, and if he comes in as a, if he comes in for water purposes, it would get charged to the water account.
Mm-hmm.
Just not his regular salary.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Alright, so, let's see, so we've got a, advisory's recommendation is four one eight six oh seven, the uh, four percent COLA number we have is four twenty-six seven forty-two. Which is an eight thousand dollar difference.
Where are you talking?
Uh, I'm looking at uh, highway, public works. Since we, since we were talking about that.
So did you guys, Sarah, have highway super at the seventy-five, because?
We had it at seventy-three thousand because. It was decided that we did not. We didn't wanna give him the seventy-nine thousand. Whoever he, she, whoever the superintendent would be.
Alright, well, is, uh, we, we, we have hired, we have hired them at that new, we have hired them at that new rate, so.
So, it's, it's, it's a cut. Okay.
So it's just, and it's just one of those, I think we got a good candidate, and, and so, and.
Yeah. So in a, but, in a labor market where you can't find a human being with a CDL that actually wants to pick up a shovel, we were gonna cut the pay on the superintendent. For what superintendent that we couldn't even get a qualified applicant for.
And, and who has a wa- has a water operator license, it's like. I think, I think this is the best deal the town's going to get in a long time.
Yeah. I, I don't mind standing in front of town meeting and explaining that line.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Look if it doesn't work, like, is it, we can find anyone.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to them on Tuesday to see if we can revoke to get it to the seventy-nine thousand.
Alright, it, it's, there's a new number, eighty-one six hundred.
Oh, oh.
Seventy-nine was what we were budgeting.
Yep.
He came in a little above what we budgeted, but with all that he brought, we decided that it was worth it.
Okay, so what's the new number?
Eighty-one thousand six hundred.
Okay.
Alright, and then snow and ice, we're just uplifting ice wa- the wages. Cemetery is. What am I missing here on cemetery? Sorry, I've got a. Oh, cemetery improvements, that's my problem, one second, I have a calculation error, and it's fixed.
There you go.
Yes. And so we are a, uh, we are less than a thousand dollars above se- uh, advisory, advisory was thirty-three two hundred, we're at. Thirty-four oh sixty-five, and I think that is all on. That's all on wages.
And public works total is ten grand difference.
Yeah, and I, I think that's all, I think that's primarily the s- the water superintendent and the difference in COLAs.
Yeah.
So I, I think, I think we are effectively in alignment here, there's nothing unusual here. Uh, Board of Health. Board of Health Agent.
Yes.
I think that's a um. We should, in, we should, in, we should discuss, I, I can dis- I can discuss this Maureen offline, but she may want to discuss it with the board, um. From my discussion. She, they want a Board of Health Agent, they say it's not going to affect the tax rate, I have talked to Kelly and the accountant about this. And because this is a new position, we cannot offset the expenditure with any expected revenue. We need to establish a track record of revenue for this position in order to put it on the, in order to count, in order to project it as revenue. And so therefore, it's going to cost us additionally. The Board of Health has a revolving account. That, to my mind, would be the perfect place to pay for this health agent, the fees collected by the health agent goes to the revolving account, and then pays for them to do their work.
And so zero that out, or?
So my thought is, is that we, we should be talking to the Board of Health and explaining to them that. If, i- i- that in order to achieve their goal of not impacting the tax rate with this position, the revolving account, using the revolving account. To receive the monies that the health, that the uh, that they collect, and then to pay the cost of this person makes sense. There are also, historically, we haven't spent a lot of money on this position. Like I think, uh, Kel- I, Kelly's notes said. Like we had, I'm confident it was less than a thousand, I wanna say it was less than seven hundred.
Yeah, I think it was like, six hundred and something.
No, wait, Board Health, not Board Health Transfer Station.
So we can use the revolving account for that?
That was, that was my understanding, and.
If it's legal to use the revolving account for that, I don't object.
Okay, I will um, I will consult with Lori on that, and uh, my recollection is that Lori was concurrence at the, that the revolving account was the right place, but I'll.
And then we zero that out, or?
And if, if that's the case, then we would uh, talk to the Board of Health and say, we're not gonna fund this from the ju- in the operating budget. We recommend if you wanna hire this person, you use the, that, use the revolving account. And if they need a little seed money to get started, we can negotiate that. Um, but my thought is, is that, that, there's might be some money in that revolving account to get them started anyway. I, I don't know where that is right now, again, Lori could tell us that. But, I think that. That is the, that is the better way to achieve what the Board of Health wants, and if it fizzles, then it doesn't impact the budget, if they need to use that person a lot. Then they're bringing in a lot of fees from what they're doing and, from their inspections, and it covers their cost.
So why are we recommending, I'm sorry, and I moved on to the next thing, cause I really do wanna go home. It looks like we didn't do anything with the transfer station, which is all well and good. Why are we recommending forty-two hundred when. Advisory agreed to the, close to the higher requested number for the. Council of the Aging to get a, more hours on their senior director?
Um, that's probably a cl- that's prob- I would call that a clerical error, it's got wages next to it, so it's just, it, it reflects just the COLA uplift.
Okay.
Rather than the.
So should I just copy over advisory's number and all agree with them?
Yeah, um. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that for now, my, my one. Yeah, it's like, just part of, part of me saying, yeah, the budget's tight, we could come back, if, the budget's tight, we can come back to it, if we need.
Because you just copied that number over, it just um. Changed that cell.
What's that?
You copied that number over, it just changed that cell calculation.
Yeah, the Council of the Aging Director, I got that map from doing, uh, they increased her hours, so I took. Uh, the nineteen fifty-seven that she makes and gave them the increase in hours. But they also asked for an increase in pay, we did not give her the increase in pay, we just gave her the increase in hours.
Right, but she resigned, now we're hiring a new person, so, I figure it's a good placeholder budget for hiring a new person.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a little, if it's an hour or two less than they wanted, I think, I think we can live with it, it's, it's a significant increase.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so, I mean, and to a certain extent, I think they've demonstrated that they are growing the program, and that they've. Earned more resources to uh, to keep serving the uh, the seniors in town. So I'm not opposed to it on principle.
Okay. Is there a reason why we level funded the library director?
The, okay, you, hold on, uh, let's see. Uh, let's see, uh. Did you change that number? Because that number is, matches the fis- the fiscal year twenty-five request. Level funded would have been sixty-five thousand.
Okay, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay, no worries.
Nope.
Cause I'm going, I don't think I would've done that, but. And then for library, for the library wages, we're. We're within a thou- we're within a thousand dollars, and I think that's again, COLA, that's the COLA gap.
Yeah.
Um, everything else, I think we're good down to there, and then. I don't think any of us, debt and interest and assessments are all fairly technical and not very discretionary.
Yeah.
It's like, advisory, oh, I don't think we should pay our debt, it's like. You're, we're, we're smarter than that.
Debt comes first.
Yes.
It's also a small enough number relative to the size of the budget that.
Well, yeah, yeah, debt, debt is small, assessments.
Yeah.
Assessments, yeah, that's not so, that's, that's pretty brutal.
I was gonna say, group health and life and uh, Worcester County Retirement. It's like the increase every year, it's just like, oh my god.
That's a given.
Yeah, I mean, not, there's not much we can do there. And then the water department, the water department requested a healthy COLA. Which we have um. We're recommending, and the, the number I have is a, is a consistent four percent, with the thought that, we can always discuss it. But I thought a consistent COLA was the right starting point for today, tonight's discussion.
Yep. So is water requesting that because of the labor market for water folk?
No, that's a, that's, that's an inflation-driven request. They um, they're, they're, if you go to the, the water detail tab. They break down like, what the COLA was in twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, and I think their intention is that the uh.
They're trying to catch up.
Fiscal year twenty-five is they're trying to get all caught up. Is, is what that number intends, is, is what they requested. And. While that sounds nice, I don't think there's room in the budget for that. Or at least, there's not room in the budget I'm comfortable recommending for that.
Right.
If the town, if the floor wants to increase that, then we'll increase it.
As evidenced by our town clerk last year.
Yes. And that brings us to the end of the operating budget.
Okay.
Did I miss the thing on technology with the website?
Um, well, we, technology was, we sort of glossed over technology.
Okay.
If you want to talk about the website, we have a specific agenda item for that, so we didn't miss it. But we can talk about that now because the, the technology budget does have.
Where is the technology budget?
It's near the end, second to last. When you bring up the list of tabs, um, that, this hamburger menu down there brings you the full list of tabs, just go to the bottom.
I'm just questioning if she had it in there.
Um, she does. My recollection is she does, like Civic Plus forcing upgrade, annual fee estimate for new website host.
Yeah.
Online, oh, and that's permidize. So there's a line for new website migration and a line for new website hosting, along with the existing Civic Plus. Uh, for, uh, for those who follow it at home, um, our current website vendor that supports the town of, uh, town of Brook, or was it? Town of Brookfield, MA dot US, or no, Brookfield, MA dot US, I always get that wrong. Um, the Brookfield, MA dot US site, website the town uses is hosted by a company called Civic Plus. Civic Plus has, um, Civic Plus has, has given us what, what we in sales call go-away pricing. They are, and Beth knows the real word. So, and so basically they're saying you can still be a customer, but it's gonna cost you a whole lot more. We're not interested in paying a whole lot more. The contract with Civic Plus goes through the end of the calendar year, so we are, we don't have to be off them by the end of the fiscal year. But that is a summer, fall project is to, and part, and so what we're discussing is in the budget, is that we are, there is money in the technology budget for identifying the new vendor, planning the migration, and then a little bit of overlap period because we're gonna have to have that new site going and soft-launch it and get all the kinks worked out before we move on to, before we, um, and before our civic contract services end on December thirty-first.
So it's, they gave us the go-away pricing, did they, are they at least gonna release our material? Because my understanding is sometimes they're difficult to get your stuff off of.
I haven't had.
I don't think anything on the website is all that difficult to get off because it's mostly stuff that we put up or just layout stuff we put in there. I don't think there's a lot of historical information or transaction information that we're due. Um, I would say, um, I would say that I am a, I am interested in maintaining, uh, professional third-party hosting and not having someone's brother slap together a website for us.
There is a lot of other vendors. I mean, West Brookfield has a different vendor away, well, they already kind of are using their brother. And they went to a vendor and, uh, I've been, I haven't researched it, that's why I had it on the agenda. Is it something you want me to?
Please.
But it was before I realized we're, I don't, how close do you think we are to a town administrator?
Ask me this time tomorrow night.
I mean, I, I.
I'll have a much better idea.
I can work on it if need be, but I'd rather them.
Why don't, why don't we wait and see? Because that, that would definitely be something for the new town administrator to work on and that would, that would be a good get-your-feet-wet kind of project.
We have all three, three interviews tomorrow or?
All three are coming in. I've scheduled, I've set aside an hour on the agenda for each so that we will not be rushed on. So it's, we'll be here, we could be here until nine fifteen. So, so maybe at the very beginning of the meeting, we'll move to, uh, extend to at least nine fifteen.
Okay.
I have a quick question about it, about that. So are you gonna look into not using my town government anymore?
My town government is, my town government is for meeting notices and postings. It is not.
Different vendor altogether.
It is, and it's most, it's, it's volunteer. I don't think it costs us anything.
Yeah, so like, okay, because the reason why I ask is like, okay, so I'm gonna compare it to Spencer. So Spencer, we upload all of our agendas, all of our minutes to our website and that counts as our.
And I, and I believe they, do they use Civic Plus? Because that is a feature of Civic Plus that we just don't have in our contract.
I don't know, I can find out what we use.
I can, I can look right now.
Yeah, so I didn't know, so I just didn't know if like we were gonna, if we were gonna continue using my town government and keep the website or if we were gonna switch everything over to the website and get rid of my town government.
I, I think that at the moment, that's not the.
Yeah, they're using Civic.
We're open to it, but.
They, they're using the bundled product that does the minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah, and who's there? Is Spencer it does?
And they use Civic Plus.
Okay, but that's probably an extra module.
I'd be interested to see what they're spending. It looks like they're probably spending quite a bit.
Yeah.
They, they get the fancy ones.
Yeah, it looks like they got, they, they got the good one.
Yeah, everyone has a login, like I can go in and edit anything.
And it's good, don't get me wrong.
No, it is.
Yeah.
For the money you're spending, it's very turnkey and, but it's a lot more than.
Yeah.
Well, the only expense for us to go up to that is that twenty thousand. The ongoing is probably between five and eight.
Five and eight hundred or?
Five and eight thousand.
Okay.
But it would probably consolidate. The reason to go to that is it consolidates a lot of other things that we're paying for.
Okay.
Like?
Well, we're, I think we're not considering permidize, uh, not permidize, we're not considering Civic Plus because where the pricing is going. So, I mean, I guess technically if they are forcing everyone to go up to the tier where things like that are included and we were sort of looking at it anyway, I would, um, say we'd be remiss in not just verifying that it's, uh, whether or not it's a good deal.
I didn't think it was.
Because we might, it might have been just a, the price is going up, we're staying away.
My, my, that was Kelly's opinion. Mine was, it's pretty good what they got.
I mean, it's like if, if they're, if they're, if they're just raising their prices for what we got, it's like, okay, that's one thing. If they're saying, we're getting rid of that lower tier and you have to start at the higher tier with more services, then it's a question of, do those services make sense for us to offer?
Right.
And it's like, and that's, and I'd say we'd be remiss in not looking into it.
Yeah.
It may, it may turn out, no, it's not worth it, or they say, well, there's a great value here.
Right.
But I think we should, I think we should investigate it, whether that's you, Brad, or whether it's the, uh, town administrator.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, they, they can do all their payments through there. It's, I don't think it's through Unibank, it's probably all through Civic Plus.
No, it's through you to pay.
Oh, it is? Okay.
But, but you can pay your building inspector, you can pay your plumbing inspector, you can pay anything.
Yeah.
So what I would, what I would like is if we're done going through the budget, I would like a motion to approve. Before that.
Second.
Let me, let me, let me, let me get there, let me get there. Because I will, I will take a motion from the board to approve the, uh, to, for the, for the select board to recommend a budget to town, uh, at ten million, five hundred seventy-seven thousand, three hundred sixty dollars and six cents reflecting the document we have in front of us now.
You have that motion.
Second.
All right, thank you. Now, uh, just for discussion before we get there, the intention will be, um, this will lock in our recommendation. We will have the opportunity to reconsider this. Um, I'll go through it, I'll scrub it if we find any errors or any irregularities or something comes up in our discussion with Peter next week. We'll make edits as needed, but this is sort of a baseline budget and we'll make adjustments from there. Karen, I will send you a copy of this document that will, uh, serve as a record of the meeting and, uh, Sarah, I will also send you a copy of it.
As the basis of the motion, yes.
And so, uh, therefore, so we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all in favor of adopting the budget at, uh, of recommending a budget to town meeting at ten million, five hundred seventy-seven thousand, three hundred sixty dollars and six cents, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Beth?
I'll just adjourn.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor of adjourning at nine forty PM, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we're out of here.